Great, everyone. Welcome to the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three Town Council meeting. I would ask that we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to take a moment of silence to reflect on everything that's happening, not only in our country, but around the world. Thank you. I have to make an announcement. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being recorded by LCAP, and I have to ask if anyone in the audience is audio or video recording. Seeing none. Moving right on, public comments. Jenny, do we have anyone signed up?
No, we don't.
Okay. Is there? No one's online, Don?
Oh, great. Uh, Jernstrom, did he sign up?
He did not.
He did not sign up, but it is public comment.
Thank you. I'm just asking.
Yep. Please bring him in.
There he is.
That looks good. Greg, are you there?
You're muted.
You're muted.
How about now?
That's much better. Thank you. How are you this evening?
Good, and yourselves?
Very good.
Uh, Craig Jernstrom, forty-nine Weber Street, Springfield, Massachusetts, Long Term East Long Meadow resident, and looking to get back into town in the near future, but um, I see on the agenda, um, down farther, we're going in an executive session for discussion on three eighty-two North Main Street purchase or acquisition again. Um, and I just had a couple of questions pertaining to that. Um, the first one was, I was looking at the capital plan for fiscal year twenty-four or twenty-three, and, and I don't see where expenditures for this are listed anywhere, or is that something I'm missing?
I don't think expenditures were on the capital, uh, project, but that is something I can look into.
Or, or, you know, or was this, was this a budgeted project at all, or?
So, this was a project that back, um, I believe it was February, um, a vote was taken by the council on, and the executive session is just an update on where we stand with everything.
So, so this is being done for, and we're spending, you know, and, and I've heard anywhere between, you know, four and six million dollars for this building. Um, but, but we're doing this, and it's something that hasn't been budgeted?
Like I said, I will take a look at the, the capital expenditures, and I can get back to you on that.
Yep. Um, you know, cause that, and, you know, and I'm just, you know, wondering, and um, you know, if we have proposals to, how much more is it gonna cost on top of the purchase price? You know, to convert this to a town hall? Um, which I, I, I understand it, it, it's going to cost some money to do that. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned is how we can do this and spend all this money without it being budgeted and approved, and it just, it appears to me that the vote's being done in executive session, and the town finds out, because they get told we're buying the building, and, and the town has no say in it, because it's not in the capital plan that comes up where it's actually an open meeting where the public has a chance to comment on.
Though I will state, under Mass General Law, the vote to purchase, not purchase lease, or anything like that, is done in open session. Um, any votes that were taken, uh, with regards to, um, the cost and stuff have always been done in open session. They are not done in an executive session.
Okay. Um, is, I don't know, I seem to think that, you know, the same thing kinda happened with seventy Maple Street. That was all done and bought and finished in executive session.
No, actually, it wasn't.
It was an open session, but um, I don't know, it just concerns me that there's a lack of public involvement in it. Um, and, and that's the big thing that, that concerns me.
So, seven years ago, the town specifically voted, um, to change the form of government from an annual town meeting to a city form of government. And with the city form of government, we are elected officials, and as elected officials, we are tasked with, uh, um, responsibilities to go through the budget and for us to do it, instead of it going to a town meeting where it's the public.
And, and I, and I, and I was in favor of, of going to the, the change in the form of town government, but people that were against it were telling me we're gonna lose our voice, and I was saying, oh, I didn't think that that was gonna happen, but it appears like it does to a certain degree here, but um, but yeah, I guess if you could just let me know on, uh, whether this is in the budget or anything like that, I'd appreciate it. But, uh, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Don, is there anyone else with their hand up? Thank you.
Don't see anybody else with a hand up.
And is there anyone in the audience under public comment that would like to speak? You would have three minutes to.
Is this, if I wanna talk about the school a little bit, where I go?
Well, it's three minutes public comment. So, so what you choose to say in three minutes is up to you. And name an address for the record, please.
It's only a quarter of a billion dollars. Three minutes should be more than enough time. Thank you. And after twelve years, my hearing aids have failed. We're gonna go get new ones, so bear with me if I can't hear you back. It's gonna be tough for me, but.
So, we need your name and address.
Ross Levine, seventy-two Bannier Drive.
Thank you, Ross. Okay, floor is yours.
Thank you. I don't remember who said it, but the expression goes something like this. It's better to fill the needs of all than the wants of some. I guess we all now know that it's gonna be at least eighteen percent just to, just for the high school a year. And then on top of that, we're gonna have the two and a half percent that we always get. So, we're looking at a twenty percent increase. And my concern here is the town really doesn't know this yet. You know it. I know it, they know it, but the town hasn't heard this. The reminder ran a piece a few weeks ago. There's no mention of a, of a tax increase. Everybody thinks we're getting a new school, and I don't know how they think it's gonna be paid for, but, and I'm concerned that they're not gonna find out until it's too late. And there really should be transparency on this, and I'm not sure who's supposed to do that. But if you're gonna blow up the budget with a twenty percent tax increase, then the people really should know. And I mean, that's if nothing happens with the cost of construction right now, with the cost of labor with this thing. We're living in a time when they finally admitted that seventy percent of us in the country, I don't know about the city, are living paycheck to paycheck. Credit card debt went up almost five percent the, the last quarter, the second quarter of this year. Almost five percent people are having to charge on credit cards. And what we're saying is that the average person is gonna pay at least a hundred dollars a month more in taxes if this goes through. Everybody says it's a sixty-year-old building, or some people say, and it's outlived its useful life. I, I've never heard of that before, where a building just has outlived its life. I hear people say that the walls are full of asbestos and mold, but then you ask the people who know, and they say, it's not true. There's no asbestos or no mold. But if you ask at the school committee board meeting, uh, building meeting, they just kinda give you a wink and a nod, like, yeah, it's there. But it's not there. And then you get things like that they call base cost repair is a hundred and fifteen million dollars base cost repair. But that on other things, they have the same thing, and, and I got it in writing from one of them, is called code upgrade. And I said, which is it? Is it repairs or code upgrade? And he says, well, the terms are interchangeable. That may be true, but the average person looks at that and says, look, it's gonna cost a hundred and fifteen million dollars either way. We might as well get a new high school out of this thing. And it's not true. We don't need a hundred and fifteen million dollars worth of repair. Certainly not today. It's an old building, like all old buildings, it needs repairs, it needs a roof, we know that. And it just seems to me that we should be looking at a way that's responsible for everybody in this town, and not, in my opinion, what is a very loud but minority of people that want, want this high school built. And I, I mean, we didn't, I don't know what happened over at the bowling alley, for instance, the other night. I really don't. But we had, we had, I mean, I don't think, does our police force adequate? We had to call Long Meadow for help over at a, fight at a bowling alley. So, my point is, what else are we gonna have to give up going down the road? Because we put ourselves in this kinda debt for the next thirty years. We're talking alone about, if the numbers are accurate, something like a hundred and thirty-five million dollars in interest alone. I mean, these are astronauts. I, am, am I wrong on these numbers? Anyone?
That will come up later in the meeting, actually. We have our bonding, uh, company coming in tonight.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Sorry, our bonding company will be here later tonight, and they will be going over all the numbers.
All right. And I, and I would also say, and I said this at, at the building meeting, um, I don't know, I think it was May. Has anybody even asked the business community about this? The guys who pay all those taxes like we do, and they're gonna get a twenty percent increase. How many of them are gonna be forced to leave and go somewhere where it's a more friendly tax environment? And how many people that were going to come here aren't going to come here? Is it trouble up there?
They're calling you.
I'm wondering why you said it at three minutes without touching it.
I am sorry. I thought I had that on silent.
I, I usually, I usually only put one on the sleeve.
Time's up.
And actually, Ross, I hate to say it, but the three, it, it is actually up. It's actually four minutes I let you go. Um, but what I will say is
And I, um, one quick thing.
Okay.
And how many businesses will not locate here? Because they find a better friendly environment to, to go to for their taxes, and that will put an even greater burden on the residential side. Now, I asked this question at the, at the meeting, uh, the school building committee meeting, and the response I got was, it's gonna be tough. That's what he said, that whoever it was, it's on whatever it's on. And it shouldn't have to be tough. We should be meeting the needs of the whole community. People that live below poverty level, there's a great many of them in this, in our, in our town, correct? I don't know how they're gonna do this. Um, all kinds of people are gonna have to make all kinds of adjustments or move. And I just don't, and the other question, and then I'll be done.
Last question.
You should hear you guys talk. And then, um, I've asked again and again, can anybody tell me that a new school will give children a better education? And no one can tell me that. And it is my belief, my strong belief, that the child's education is gonna be based on the quality of the teachers, the administrators, the parents' involvement, and the child's willingness to learn. I don't think the building, I mean, you gotta have a nice building. I don't think the building has much to do with it at all. And I think the money should be going towards people and not towards building, making sure we got the best teachers, the best administrators, all of that. The building's fine. We can fix the building. There's nothing in it that can't be fixed. It's a sixty-year-old building. We, most of us probably live in sixty-year-old houses.
Okay.
I'm done.
I'm gonna cut you off then, yes. So, what I will say is, September twenty-first
Yes.
is the next public forum with regards to the school building committee. And do we know where it's going to be? The high school cafeteria. So, September twenty-first.
Six o'clock.
Six PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, you have to come up, and you have to state your name and address for the record, please.
Don't wanna waste your time.
Only because there's a microphone there, so that everyone at home can hear.
This building was built in nineteen sixteen. It's got plenty of life in it. That's it.
And could we have your name?
Marilyn, I'm sorry, Marilyn Gignini, Ben Tree Drive, Islam Meadow.
Thank you.
It was.
Marilyn.
Council comments. So, I'm gonna start this off, and I'm gonna start with um, an apology to the first responders. They had a ceremony last night that I was unable to attend. Um, I have been in attendance. I believe it's the last four years in a row. And, um, and I miss it. Um, I, I was sorry I couldn't be there, but I was glad that they've continued on with it. Um, it is a wonderful ceremony, and let us never forget, uh, what's happened on September eleventh. And I would open it up. Is there anyone else on the council?
Marilyn, a, a ton of credit for a wonderful, uh, speech that she gave. She made the council proud, so I, I was glad that I was able to, uh, attend, and, and it was a great event all around.
Thank you.
It always is.
Yes, it's a wonderful event. Okay, um, town manager, do we have a report?
We do. I, I think a lot of stuff has happened since Friday when I sent this to you. So, I'll, uh, I may ad lib a little bit that you maybe didn't, didn't get yet, but, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I'll second John's remarks to start, and, uh, Marilyn, uh, you did have a wonderful anecdote, and, uh, we're all appreciative and a very well-represented, uh, represented the town very well. So, thank you for that. Earlier, uh, or last month, I guess, um, we had a, uh, a regional government meeting, which was, uh, very, uh, informative. Uh, elected officials and, uh, administrators and managers from Wilbraham, Hamden, Ludlow, Munson, Long Meadow, and Islam Meadow were there. Um, we talked about a wide range of, of topics, and, uh, not just regionalization of some of these things, um, you know, to, to try to save costs, but just everybody's ideas on what they're, what they've got going on in terms of broadband and veteran services, uh, school enrollment, crime, health, trash. Um, it really was, uh, quite an evening, uh, well-attended, and, um, I think a lot of people got a lot out of it, and we're gonna try to continue to do those quarterly, um, moving forward. Uh, Westcon Board of Directors met, um, on the first of the month. Um, the town, or the district, uh, purchased the old Salter College building in Chicopee. Um, and so there's a plan to renovate that space, uh, for, for, you know, more up-to-date facility for, uh, for dispatch. Um, obviously, the initial estimate, uh, has gone up a little bit since, uh, since we voted, uh, last year, uh, but they're doing some, uh, value engineering, and we're sort of prioritizing some of the alternates uh, in the bid to kinda get that number back down. Um, we're hoping, uh, that, that building will be operational sometime in early twenty twenty-five. Uh, we did, uh, the town audit last week, uh. Haven't heard anything, uh, I said, as of this writing, there was nothing to report. Still nothing, uh, to report out of, uh. I think Kim's here tonight, so, uh, if anything did come up, maybe she can update us, but, uh, it sounds like, uh, the books look good, so. Um, there's a hearing in Land Court set for September twenty-second, uh, with regard to the Islam Meadow Redevelopers versus the Town of Islam Meadow Planning Board for thirty-three thirty Chestnut. Um, so I'll keep you abreast of, of how that's gonna go. The, the attorney for the fields has, uh, drafted a motion to consolidate as defendants, so, uh, and possibly dismiss some of the claims, uh, nothing as of yet, obviously, but uh, we'll, uh, I'll let you know when, when, when I know. Um, Bailey has, uh, secured a contract with, uh, Pioneer Valley Planning to assist us in the creation of the Center Town District, uh, which is, uh, sort of, uh, it's been a goal in town, I guess, for, for like a year and a half, and certainly notified or outlined in the, in the town's master plan, um, as something that we wanna, uh, explore. So, hopefully, uh, hopefully they can help Bailey finish that process. He's already done quite a lot of legwork on the, on the subject already, but um, hopefully, uh, next fall, we'll have something that we can, uh, we can roll out. Um, this, uh, this kinda goes along with, uh, some things that we've talked about before, and that's a better communication with the public Thursday, uh. In the, uh, I'll be having a coffee with the town manager session here at the Council on Aging. Uh, so we're looking, we're looking for a relaxed setting sort of Q and A. Um, we could let a heckler or two in, but we'll keep it at a minimum, uh, hopefully. Um, that's at eleven o'clock on Thursday. So, come on by and, and say hi. Um, I had on here that I was gonna introduce you to, uh, Jason Burgeoner. He's the new Veteran Service Officer. Um, I met with him. I don't see him online. Um, so maybe he'll pop in at some point if there was a miscommunication on my part, maybe. Um, Jason, uh, started a, a month or so ago. Um, obviously, that was been a position that, uh, was tough to fill for a while there, and, and, and the veterans were suffering for that, but, uh, Jason is, uh, sort of taking the bull by the horns and has really, really done amazing, amazing work, uh, for, for the district since he's been here. So, I just wanted to kinda put a face to the name. Um, he's, uh, in Islam Meadow in Monday and Tuesday and Friday. His office is here at the COA. So, I'm sure he'd be welcome to some visitors if you wanna come say hi. Um, we got, uh, some, uh, there was a water break this evening in Springfield that, uh, caused some issues for the low-pressure side of town here, uh, which is sort of Elm Street, North Main, Maple and Chestnut. Um, there, everybody else is fed from the water tower by gravity. Uh, so, I just got a text from Bruce, and I think we're almost back to full pressure, so if you're on this side of town, um, I think you should be good when you get home.
Good.
All right? Uh, the, uh, fire department responded to a fire on Kibbie Road this morning, uh. Looks like, uh, the no injuries to report, which is good. The house is a, a total loss. Uh, there was, uh, thank you to, I believe, Long Meadow, Wilbraham, and Shaker Pines Fire Departments for, uh, their mutual assistance, mutual aid assistance. Um, and, uh, again, uh, we, we've got some up, upcoming events. I, my first one listed is the, the nine-eleven ceremony last night. It was really, uh, if you've never been, I would seriously consider going next year. Um, well-represented by our fire department. Uh, almost everybody was there. Marilyn, John were there. Um, Rep Ash and Rep Hublot also came, and representatives from Senator Olivera's office were also there, uh, along with maybe thirty or forty guests, so, um, like the, like President Page said, that it's very important to not forget what happened on that day twenty-two years ago. Um, tomorrow, I know.
Crazy.
Tomorrow, um, we, me and Joan are meeting with, uh, uh, an insurance analysis, um, company, uh, to, to kinda get a feel for, um, how we're, how we're looking in terms of our insurance and stuff, and, and try to get a feel for, uh, what we can do to try to bring some of those costs down. Uh, if it's not now, maybe next year, what, what's going on? I wanna talk to, um, the rest of the people in Scenic Valley as well, to see what we can do there, but um, coffee with the manager Thursday, the fourteenth, uh, public forum for the high school, six PM, September twenty-first, um, at the high school. Um, coming up in October, celebrate East Long Meadow at Center Fields, uh, eleven to five. Um, Oktoberfest, October twenty-first, at Brown Farm from twelve to four. And another public forum is October nineteenth. I do not believe we have a time and location for that yet, but, um, we got same?
I think.
Okay. Thank you, Gordon. Um, that's all I got for tonight. You got any questions already? Yeah.
Question, um, the insurance analysis, that we're looking at health, property, and liability, everything?
We're gonna look at it all.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone have any questions for the town manager? Thank you. Much appreciated. Um, thank you. I didn't fix communications, correspondence, and announcements. Um, I did receive a letter recently from Stuffing the Pantry, uh, five K, um, which has been happening on Thanksgiving Day here for the last twelve years. And they're basically asking the town for permission to, um, run the event again. Uh, the event, uh, happens on Thanksgiving morning at eight AM, starts and ends at, uh, American Saw, and it's to benefit, uh, the pantry. Um, I think it's a great event, and I wanted to give them a little plug. And next month, I'll probably do it again, and possibly in November, too, right?
Along the bike path, there are.
They do use the bike path, um, but it's five K, so it's it's, it's part of it. I think they go through the center of town, too. And that's all I have for communications. Next, we have public hearings. Okay, so we have a continuance of a public hearing, um, for First Congregational Church Window Project. Um, this is a continuation of a public hearing to approve forty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act Historical Fund Account for the First Congregational Church Window Project. Uh, council members present are Anna Jones, Matt Boucher, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Connor O'Shea, John Torsia. Um, I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice.
East Lang Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on July eleven, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty PM in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at three twenty-eight North Main Street, to address a Community Preservation Act application for the First Congregational Church Window Project. Information relating to this application is available for review by the public in the town clerk's office and on the town's website. Public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar for the council. Jean R. Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
So, at this time, I'm gonna announce that we've received information from the Community Preservation Committee's, uh, chairman, um, that an updated cost for window rent renovation instead of replacement has not been received yet. And so they were asking for a continuance to our next meeting for the public hearing. Um, I would make the suggestion going forwards that we continue this, and if it's still not available at the me- next meeting, then we should consider, um, closing it, um, voting on it, um, based on the information that we have. And if the vote goes down, then they would just have to reapply, but I think free continuances should be plenty enough, so. Um, so would someone like to make a motion to continue the public hearing?
Sure. I make a motion to continue the public hearing to our next meeting, which I believe is October tenth at six fifteen PM.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay.
A motion's been made to continue and seconded. Um, this a roll call vote, correct? This a roll call vote. So, at this time, um, Anna.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I am a guest, Marilyn.
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And John?
I abstain.
And John abstains. Six, four, one abstention. Thank you.
Do the minutes.
So, I would entertain a motion to go out of order to, um, yeah, what number? Eight, C, approval of minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are on approval of minutes, or August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I motion to approve the August eighth, twenty twenty-three open session minutes.
I'm gonna second that.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do we have to do local?
Well, yeah.
Um, there's no council members on Zoom. What's that?
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sitting there. Yeah.
And I think by the time we actually open the public beating, it should be six thirty, so.
Thirty now.
Is it six thirty? It is now. Um, okay, we have a public hearing, a liquor license change of category.
That's a, my air. It's a new liquor license.
It's a new liquor license.
This is a new liquor. Okay, so you threw me there.
Go to number one.
A new liquor license for, um, D, D, DBA Motu Indian Kitchen. So, this is a public hearing for an application for a new all-alcoholic beverages on-premises license for Narajan Inc., DBA Motu Indian Kitchen, located at five twenty North Main Street. Uh, council members, uh, present are Anna Jones, Matt Boucher, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Connor O'Shea, and John Torsia. I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws that Naranjan Inc., DBA Motu Indian Kitchen, five twenty North Main Street, East Long Meadow, has applied for an all-alcohol
Has applied for an all alcoholic on premises liquor license. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M. In the Council on Aging Media Room, three twenty-eight North Main Street, East Long Meadow. Hearing can also be attended via Zoom webinar for the council, Jean R. Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Okay, so the way this is gonna work is I will ask the applicant uh to speak and explain what they're looking for. Um, I will open up the public forum, um, for any public comments, then I will bring it back to the board. We will close the public portion of the hearing and make a decision. So is the applicant present? Please come forwards. Please, good evening.
Evening.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name's Harshman Singh, uh, and I've worked for Motu Indian Kitchen at five twenty North Main Street, East Long Meadow.
Okay, and could you just give us a little synopsis of what you're looking to do, hours of operation, um?
Yeah, sure, uh, so we just opened recently, did a soft lunch about a couple weeks ago. Um, we're an Indian, fast casual Indian restaurant, uh, and so we're open eleven to nine P M. Um, Monday through Saturday, we're closing on Sundays, uh, and so we're just looking to expand our beverage section. We only do fresh lemonades and stuff like that at the moment, sodas, uh, but we get a lot of requests for B Y O B. Or just beer and wine for those who are dining in. It is mainly a takeout business, um, but for those who do want to sit down. We don't have anything for them, so for that purpose, we would like to expand our offerings.
But Genie is the request for all alcohol, okay, so.
Beer and wine, you want all alcohol?
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
There, there's just two different categories.
For sure, yeah, yeah, uh, so our other restaurant in downtown Springfield, we do only beer and wine, but here. The menu is kind of geared towards more cocktails than it is.
Okay.
Just a beer, yeah.
Excuse me, Genie, the application on page two. Three, um, it states beer and wine.
I thought I saw that too, yeah.
Um, page three.
Oh, so it is beer and wine, okay.
And I thought it was.
The beer and wine or all alcohol?
Oh, it's all, that's the one we were fine for, yeah.
Would that have to be adjusted?
Public hearing is for the all alcohol. The legal notice was for all alcohol, so that's correct. Uh, I could have to, I'd have to ask the A B C C if made the motion for alcohol, like, I suppose we could just amend the application before it goes to the A B C C.
Since classification, all alcoholic beverages.
I put on page three.
On the next page, so.
It says, uh, a beer and wine.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I never made it to page three.
Check the rest of the application, make sure it's consistent, all alcoholic.
Like the one I filled up?
Yeah, yeah, so this page just said beer, wine instead of all alcohol.
Okay, I believe that one was for previous.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, so that's for our other locations, same company, we own a beer and wine, a beer and wine license.
Okay, okay, thank you, thanks. Prices.
Yeah.
Yes, crisis averted, good. This is an all, all alcoholic. So does any counselor?
Oh, okay.
Yes, question, we'll, we'll start with a question and then I'll open it up to the public, go ahead.
Hi there.
Hi.
Um, in your application, you show um, a floor plan for the basement area. Now, as I see it, it looks like it's all for food prep. The public will not be.
Yeah, basement is.
There's in that area at all.
Correct, basement is fully sealed off to just employees, the only entrances are for employees only, uh, and there are clear signs for that as well.
Now, looking at your main floor, um, you've got three decks, one in the front and two on the other side. They look to me in size, I have not visually gone and looked at the property, but it looks to me that they are basically. Decks with which to access the building, but there's no room for additional seating outside.
Correct, the front deck does have like enough room to put benches and seating, but we don't have the, all the. Seating capacity is taken up by the inside.
That's not in the end, okay.
No outdoor seating.
Also, um, on the first floor plan, um. I can see the seats that are along the window area, um, which were there when the coffee, same like when the coffee shop was there. Uh, are you planning to establish some sort of a service bar or patron bar within your. Main floor, because I don't see where the other seats are gonna be placed, really, they're, I mean, they're really not. We're looking at.
It isn't like.
Yeah, I think these are, um, so I did just very.
Oh, okay, okay, but is, do you plan to put a bar?
Like a full bar for you to come up to, to order? Uh, no, it would just be a. The, currently the restaurant, you have to go to a self-ordering key assist to order your drinks and everything, everything else you're ordering, so it'll just be ordered there and it'll be bottled. For the table that they're sitting at, it's not like a pull-up to a.
And it's my understanding that if I was thirsty and I pulled up and walked up to the bar and asked for a drink, I needed to be seated and dining to have that.
Correct, the alcohol is for that, um, currently Massachusetts does have the to-go liquor license, uh, or that is still extended. Um, for those we planned on just, we currently do the lemonades and bottled, sealed balls, bottles, so for to-go drinks, we planned on doing that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time I'd like it to open it up to the public and ask the public if they have any um, questions or comments. Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board. Um, I would ask, uh. If the board has any additional questions or comments, or what the wishes of the board are. Seeing no comments, I would uh entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Still move.
Second.
And I think if you're still gotta do a roll call, so Anna.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
I am a yes, Marilyn.
Yes.
Uh, Connor.
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
So the public hearing is closed and would, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve a new all alcoholic beverages on premise liquor license for Naranjan. Doing business as Motu Indian Kitchen, five twenty North Main Street.
I will second that.
Having a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, we will do a roll call vote, Anna.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
I am a yes, Marilyn.
Yes.
Uh, Connor.
Yes.
And John.
Me, yes.
That passes, you are all set, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
I can.
We're just going way too quick.
I move to move out of order to orders of the day until such time as the six forty-five and then return to our public hearing.
Second.
Okay, having a motion made and seconded to go out of order, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes, so our next one is licensing matters, which would be number eight A. Um, this is the approval of a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple at forty-three Chestnut Street. For a music and charity fundraiser. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple, forty-three Chestnut Street for September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Two to eight P M for a music charity fundraiser.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I, I was, I.
Yes, I, I know, but I'm just.
I thought you.
We got six more minutes. Yes, that's what we're going to do, um, our next up under licensing matters is the approval of a one-day liquor license. For Saint Paul the Apostle Church. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Saint Paul the Apostles Church. Two thirty-five Dwight Road for a birthday celebration on October eighth, two thousand twenty-three from six to eleven P M.
So a second, Matt?
I second.
Having a motion made and seconded, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we'll go to licensing matters. Uh, A three, um, approve two one-day liquor licenses for Saint Luke Greek Orthodox Church. Four hundred Prospect Street for the Taste of Greece. Is there a motion?
I motion to approve two one-day liquor licenses for Saint Luke's Greek Orthodox Church. For a hundred Prospect Street for the Taste of Greece for October thirteen, twenty twenty-three. From four to nine P M and October fourteen, twenty twenty-three from eleven to nine P M.
I'm gonna second that.
Okay, um, having a motion made and seconded, uh, further discussion, um. Genie, I didn't notice, are they going to have an officer on site again? I know in the past they have.
Yes, they will. Is it, Jackie, do you know if it's more than one? Officer?
I know this is a, a very well-attended event in the past and uh, they've always done a wonderful job with it, absolutely.
Mark Williams commented and there, the applicant is very close contact with the police department.
I know in the past, um, someone had mentioned, um, on a different subject about this and, um. Like they said, they, it's always very well taken care of, so. Um, so we've had a motion made, seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Is there a motion to skip to B two?
I move that we move out of order to eight B two and continue until such time as it's six forty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, eight B two, per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty B, Section fifteen F. Um, declare a two thousand and six Ford E three fifty ambulance surplus equipment. Um. So that's this. So, is there a motion?
Sure.
Uh, per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty B, Section fifteen F, I make a motion to declare a two thousand six Ford F E three. The ambulance rescue three, bus equipment and approve the donation of the same to the town of Belcher Town.
I'll second it.
Uh, motion made and seconded, further discussion, um, so there was an email sent, um. From Chief Morsette, uh, basically just letting us know that this is the ambulance that, uh, Palmer Ambulance. Had donated to us, um, we have used the ambulance, we no longer need the ambulance. And now Belcher Town is looking for one because theirs is broken, um. Tom had asked me if I thought there was an issue, I thought this was a great idea if we can pass the bill along that we should. So with that being said, motions made, seconded, further discussions done, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we have time to wrap.
Okay, but let's go on and let's do, um, yep, B three, which is approval of a reserve fund transfer. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a transfer of two thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. From the reserve fund account zero one one three two seven dash five seven eight oh. To the accounting lease account, zero one one three five two dash five two seven oh. For a prior year's bill from C V S for contract overage charge.
Having a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So with that, um, I am going to make a slight announcement here, um. Through discussions with, um, our accountant, Kim Collins, and our town manager, it's my attention that. Reserve fund transfers not need the approval of the town council. Um, we actually set aside money in the reserve fund for situations just like this, prior year's bills and all. So they don't have to come in front of us for approval each month, which will actually expedite the situation instead of waiting another. Sometimes twenty, twenty-five days in order for us to approve it, they can just go ahead and pay the bill. Um, so with that being said, I did discuss with Tom that I think, um. At least a synopsis of what is spent out of the reserve fund and when it is spent should be sent to us just so that we know. Uh, what's going on and to keep track of it, so, so with that, we will not be seeing reserve fund transfers. That will really shorten up the meeting.
Do we need to do any type of motion?
We do not, no, it's actually under Mass General Law and after some research, we figured it out.
Let's go back.
And we are going back, it is six forty-five, so I would suggest we go back to. The public hearings, so, um, this is a bylaw amendment reorganizing the Board of Public Works. So this is a public hearing for a second, for required second reading for the proposed bylaw amendment reorganizing. The Board of Public Works. Council members present are Anna Jones, Matt Boucher, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards. Connor O'Shea and John Torsia. I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. At six forty-five P M in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at three twenty-eight North Main Street. For the purpose of addressing a proposed bylaw amendment reorganizing the Board of Public Works. Amendment includes sealing chapter one seventy-five Board of Public Works in its entirety. Revising any portions of the bylaws referring to the Board of Public Works. And adding that the town council shall set water, sewer and stormwater rates. Based upon the recommendations of the Superintendent of Public Works and the decision of the town manager. The public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar. Information relating to pending bylaw amendments is available for public inspection at the Town Hall sixty Center Square. To view an, to view an electronic version of the proposed amendments, please visit W W dot et cetera. The council, Jean R. Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you. So this, um, bylaw, proposed bylaw amendment we received, we did a first reading on it. We referred it to, um, our bylaw subcommittee, who the chairman is present tonight, I would ask him to come forwards. Um, he sent a letter to us, um, if he doesn't mind, I'll read it in, uh, to the members of the town council. Bylaw Review Committee met on Friday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-three to discuss the amendment reorganizing the Board of Public Works. After a good discussion, which also included Bruce Fanny, uh, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the amendment as presented. Those are your words.
Those are my words, sir.
Um, so did you find any, any thoughts, any concerns, any issues or, um?
None, none whatsoever, I mean, we went back and discussed what happened when we first formed the charter. How it was a five-four vote to allow the Board of Public Works to continue to exist in an advisory capacity only. And through it, through, you know, many, many discussions, it was decided to propose these amendments. Moving forward.
Anyone have any questions? So Genie, I have a procedural question.
Mm-hmm.
Should we open it up to the public? Should we do a second reading, then open it to the public?
I would do the second reading first.
And then open it to the public because that way there are any, in the future, if there was any changes, it would be read in.
And the public can hear.
Okay, anyone that would like to do the second reading?
Sure.
Do you have?
I do.
Thank you, Connor.
Okay, proposed bylaw amendment reorganizing the Board of Public Works, Chapter one nineteen, Public Works Department. History adopted by the Town Council of, Town of East Long Meadow, August, no, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, amendments noted were applicable. Section one nineteen dash one, Department Head, the town manager with town council approval shall appoint a superintendent of public works. The superintendent of public work shall be responsible for the supervision and coordination of all public works operations of the town. That are placed under the superintendent's control by charter, bylaw, the town manager, laws and regulations, or by other town vote. Section one nineteen dash two, Composition. The Department of Public Works shall be under the direction of a superintendent of public works. And include additional employees as required for the efficient operation of the department. Section one nineteen dash three, Duties and Responsibilities, the purpose of the Department of Public. Works is to coordinate all public works activities, including but not limited to the following operations. Snow removal, municipal building maintenance, grounds, parks, public shade trees, water supply and distribution. Sanitary sewer systems, streets, roads, sidewalks, stormwater systems and engineering. Section one nineteen dash four, the town council shall set water, sewer and stormwater rates based upon the recommendations of the super. Section one nineteen dash four, the town council shall set water, sewer and stormwater rates based upon the recommendations of the Superintendent of Public Works and the decision of the town manager. Section one nineteen dash five, Annual Report. The Superintendent of Public Works shall annually prepare and submit to the town manager a report that shall contain all matters pertaining to the department as required by the town manager. Chapter one fifty, Multiple Member Bodies, General Provisions. History adopted by the Town Council of the Town of East Long Meadow is chapter three, section three point zero, three zero. And chapter four, section four point zero one zero of the nineteen eighty-two general bylaws amendments noted were applicable. Section one fifty dash one, Filmings and Meetings, amended April twelfth twenty twenty-two. All open session portions of regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council, School Committee, Stricken Board of Public Works. Planning Board, Board of Assessors, Board of Library Trustees and East Long Meadow Housing Authority shall be filmed by the East Long Meadow Community Access Television Department. And shall be broadcast regularly and community access television. This bylaw is not intended to expand the requirements of the open meeting law and the failure to film a meeting shall not affect the legality of such a meeting. Section one fifty dash two, Conduct of Meetings, Reports. All meetings of any governmental body with the town shall conform to the requirements of the open meeting law of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended. B, the minutes of every meeting shall be delivered to the town clerk and final typed or electronic form within thirty days of the date of said meeting. But shall be available for public inspection within ten days of said meeting. C, a member body as described in Division One, Part Three of the Town Code shall elect a chair and a clerk. Amended April twelfth twenty twenty-two. D, the annual town report shall be issued in hard copy under the direction of town manager. It shall include reports from all departments, including the school department and town council. E, no multiple member body of the town shall receive compensation for its services except as recommended by the town manager and approved by the town council. F, no town councilor shall hold any other town appointed position except as a member of an advisory committee committed. Created by the council or as an ex officio member of a committee created by the town manager or as permitted by the charter. After one seventy-five Board of Public Works is stricken, shall I read the stricken verbiage?
No, I don't think, well, what's your thoughts? Okay, do we need to read this stricken?
No, stricken won't be there and that would be the amendment.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Then chapter one eighty-five, Community Preservation Committee. History adopted by the Town Council of the Town of East Long Meadow is chapter ten, section ten point zero eight zero of the nineteen eighty-two general bylaws. Amended in its entirety, April twelfth twenty twenty-two, subsequent amendments noted were applicable. Section one eighty-five dash one, Membership Term Appointment. The Community Preservation Committee shall consist of nine members serving three-year terms. The following boards will each designate a member to sit on this committee. One, Conservation Commission, two, Historical Commission, three, Housing Authority, four, Planning Board. And new number five is Recreation Committee. B, the town manager shall appoint an additional four at-large members. Section one eighty-five dash two, Purpose. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four B, section five, the Community Preservation Committee shall study the needs, possibilities and resources of the town. Regarding community preservation, including the consideration of regional projects for community preservation. The committee shall consult with the existing municipal boards, including the Conservation Commission, the Historical Commission. The Recreation Commission, the Planning Board and the Housing Authority in conducting such studies. As part of the study, the committee shall hold one or more public information hearings on the needs, possibilities and resources of the town regarding the community preservation possibilities and resources. Section one eighty-five dash three, Recommendations. A, the Community Pres- Preservation Committee shall make recommendations to the Town Council for the acquisition, creation and preservation of open space. For the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources. For the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation and restoration of land for recreational use. The acquisition, creation, preservation and support of community housing and for the rehabilitation of restoration. Of open space and community housing that is acquired or created as provided in Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four B. Provided, however, that funds expended pursuant to M G L, chapter forty-four B shall not be used for maintenance. B, the Community Preservation Committee, may include in it, may include in its recommendation to the Town Council a recommendation to set aside for later spending funds for specific purposes. That are consistent with the community preservation, but for which sufficient revenues are not then available in the Community Preservation Fund to accomplish that specific purpose. All recommendations to the Town Council shall include their anticipated costs. C, the Community Preservation Committee shall submit to the Town Council at a public hearing. The committee's recommendations for the appropriation from the Community Preservation Fund. And such additional non-community preservation fund appropriations as it deems appropriate to carry out the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee. The Town Council shall vote to approve or veto the appropriation by requests, request by a majority.
Good job.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so at this time. I would ask the applicant. The applicant was the town manager to just give, um, a rationale and reasons, uh, proposed amendment.
So after some discussion, um, it just, it seemed that, um. In the, in the interest of the efficiency of the Public Works Department. Um, and the advisory role of the board. It, it, it sort of just didn't make any sense anymore with this form of government. Not to take anything away from anybody that sits on that board. It wasn't a personal decision. It was more about. The operation and the efficiency of the, of the department itself. And, um, that is basically the gist of it, um, in terms of what this amendment was for.
Does anyone have any questions regards to the reasoning?
Was the board aware of this? Were they part of the discussion about dissolving the board or?
Certainly not that the first reading, uh, I, they're aware now, I'm sure, um. And I don't, I don't know if, if they went to the subcommittee meeting or if they were aware of it or. Uh, that I don't know. I, I unfortunately wasn't there either. But yes, it's my understanding that they, they know that this is happening. Or it was proposed, correct.
Is this the first time that we have, uh, had proposed with the new charter a dissolution of a board?
I believe so, yes. Yep. And like, I guess like Bill said, the, the thought. At the time was almost, it wasn't even going to make it to the charter. But I think, uh. You know, obviously the vote was five to four, like you said.
It was just the five to four specifically on this item.
On the, the, leaving the Board of Public Works in the charter, correct. That's my understanding.
So in my, um. Day job outside of here, one of the things that I do is help manage boards and commissions. So this is. Boards and commissions are something that's very personal to me and interesting. As a former planning board member, former CPC member, former member of Cultural Council. And so part of it is interacting with the, um, staff that need to staff and handle. These public boards that citizens from across state, from a particular community sit on. And so I definitely understand the argument that sometimes it might be a little tough, like. You know, getting the information flow and the process of things. But I think because it's advisory, I, I just, I don't, I don't feel the philosophy of. Taking away a board from the public. I understand it's advisory, um, and I do understand the arguments that are being made and people might feel differently on this council. But I just think philosophically, I think this would go for anything in the future. I just don't, unless. The public itself were to actually vote on the dissolution of this board. That'd be, I think, a different story. If people decided at the ballot box it should go away, then. The people spoke or the people had the opportunities to speak on it, um, different from like the, we had, we removed the, um. Uh, what was it? The Technology Committee, the Subcommittee, but you know, that had been dormant for years. Now, if this. Board was dormant for five, six, seven years and nobody was on it, there was nothing. Um, but I think because there's, you know, folks continuing to serve and I think because I think. It is always good because I think we have a very well-run Public Works Department now. I think we have. Some good board members, but you know, there might come a time where, you know, maybe personnel changes and there might be some type of need. For it. So I think in that interest, I, I would be opposed to it in a form.
So I am gonna open it up to, uh, the public and I would ask if anyone in the audience or on Zoom. Would like to come forward. See a couple people. So if you could state your name and address for the record.
The leader, Seven Silver Fox Lane, East Long Meadow. Uh, I am currently a member of the Board of Public, Department of Public Works. I've been in on the board since the formation or the change of the organization structure. I think most of you know me. I definitely know most of you personally to some degree. I like to speak in opposition to it. I think the, the committee still lends value to the town. In a sense, it, it is an advisory and guidance group. Which is much more than, we are not making decisions. But the improvements in. In the Department of Public Work is, is improved because of the guidance and the challenges. That it gives the superintendent. In his operations and management of the department. We also. Form to some degree. A great liaison between other areas of, of the town and departments with the D P W as an example. The recreation area and the D P W maintaining the fields. There was a great problem there in the past couple of years, maintaining the fields. The board actually, a board member went to the Recreation Commission for. Meetings and I will tell you. It was not very pleasant. At all. I was tarred and fender at that meeting, if that's spirit. But. What came about out of it was a meeting between the board. And Bruce and Daryl. And it was a. A communication problem. It was very easily solved if people talked. That's what the board is there to hu- help resolve these issues. They get better performance and better. Understanding what the true needs of each one has and the resources available for their use. And I believe after attending a number of meetings at the recreation, it was a hundred percent turnaround. Personally, I do not believe it would ever happen. If the board did not exist. Second of all. The board provides. A form of communication with the public. We, Don. Records and publishes our meetings, but meetings are there basically. To let expo- uh, expose Bruce and the team on their activities that, that's going on in, in the community. Without that form. Most people wouldn't know what the D P W does. It is a way of Bruce and, and a team to. Let the public know everything that's going on in the town from a D P W standpoint. And it's just not D P W. It's not the highway. It's not the water. It's not the source. There's a lot of, a lot of activities that Bruce does get involved with and that's. Part of what's being discussed. Is, is his activity and involved in, in so many facets of the town. I would recommend the town manager really ask Bruce. What he thinks his scope of, of his duties are overall and if we visit that. Uh, but we as a board, we challenge them all the time. We continue to challenge them. And I think they've improved because of those challenges. But the decision making is with him and how he manages the town or the D P W part, part of the budget and the operations. But I believe the, the committee. Has been beneficial to the town in the sense of. If you viewed it from a financial standpoint, the last couple of years, the budgets from the D P W have been reasonable. Extremely reasonable. And if you go over the reviews that have been done in front of the Financial Review Committee from the Town Council. It supports that position. Very few questions have been done, sent down to Bruce after their review of all the detailed information. That's done at our level. But I believe Bruce's benefit from our review of tho- those budgets. He has made recommended changes that the board. Advises him to. And, uh, and so I, I believe the board. Lends that, that benefit to the town for communication to the, to the citizens of the town. Of, of a big portion of our budget. That wouldn't be available to them if this committee was eliminated. But that's where I stand.
Thank you.
And. Good evening. My name is Michael Lynch, uh, twenty-five Hillside Drive, East Long Meadow. Uh, I was a board member on the Board of Public Works. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. You know, I'm here because. Obviously, the, the board is, is up for, uh, uh, dissolution and, um. I felt that the way it was communicated was, was disrespectful and it was poorly handled by the past town manager. We were appointed by the town manager and we found out about this, watching this council meet that June thirteenth, when that initial meeting happened. I value my time. I know Phil does. I have a young family, so I, I, you know, I, I really appreciate spending time with them. And for that to happen when we're in this capacity to serve the town. Uh, I felt was, was quite poor and I hope that boards and commissions are, are handled with. Uh, better communication and respect by the council and under new leadership with the town. And I think that that's the case, uh, with Tom here. I think that things will, will go very well and I'm excited about you in this role. I think if you were to ask any two individuals. How, you know, if we support the D P W, we do fully heartily. You know, I think if there was one thing that we could do to improve efficiency or operations or to support the D P W. And if that meant the dissolution of this board, okay. That's fine. We have operated in an advisory role. We have made recommendations from an administrative or financial, from an operational perspective. To the board, uh, to the superintendent. And we have made recommendations on how to operate more efficiently. I think our time and the discussion we've had, at least since my, since my tenure there, I think it's been very valuable. I think that the council should really consider. A strong look into Bruce's role and make sure that he's getting the support that he needs to run that department, uh, effectively. Whether that's a, a stronger capital investment, um, or a personnel investment. Uh, specifically, so, um, I want to thank you all for the opportunity again and, um. Appreciate it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any statements, any comments? Don, is there anyone online?
No hands up, Rob.
Okay. Um, is Bruce Fanny in the audience?
Yes.
Would you bring him in? Good evening, Bruce. How are you?
Good, thank you.
So this directly affects your, uh, your department. Um, I know you've, you've been in the department for quite some time and, um, I would ask. For you to give us a quick synopsis of your thoughts, uh, your concerns, whether it be with or without a D P W, uh, board.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Page. I can just echo the sentiments that, uh, the town manager, uh, Tom Christiansen stated earlier. It's not about the board itself. They have, uh, obviously, as they stated, given me vital information over the past few years. Um, but because of a lot of the time that is spent. Uh, preparing and providing documents and the oversight from the, from the Board of Public Works. Um, and the steps it takes me to prepare our annual and capital budgets as well. Um, I go through many meetings and the main reason why I support this as well is just the efficiency of the department itself. Um, I typically go to seven to eight meetings, uh, for capital improvement and our annual operational budget. So like you said, and, uh, I believe Mr. Lynch stated as well. Um, our department is, um, lacking staff, I guess you could say, because we are stretched so thin these days. With all the regulatory requirements that are put upon us. With all the regulatory requirements that are put upon us. Um, so that's like you said, uh, the main reason why I'm supporting this as well. And there's no, like you said, disrespect to the board, um, or anything like that.
Does any counselor have any questions? Or Mr. Fanny?
Go Marilyn.
It's not a question, it's a, it's a comment, please. I know that, um, first of all, I sit on the bylaw committee. And we discussed this in our meeting and it seemed like it was. The correct thing to do. Um, now and to dissolve the Board of Public Works, based on the information that we were given at the, um, by law review committee meeting. You folks weren't there. And, um, I know that when we. And I wasn't on the charter commission, but I know we have two members here that were on the charter commission. And I know that at the time there was great discussion about. Um, eliminating the Board of Public Works at that time and that the board. They, that there was a, an interest to allow the board to continue in advisory capacity. With, in respect to the individuals had served all those years on the board, the three gentlemen that were serving. Um, out of respect to their commitment to the community, it was decided to leave the Board of Public Works. Then they all resigned. And so the rationale for doing that. Didn't happen, no. Um. I'm listening to what John said. And I'm listening to what I'm hearing from you and I'm starting to have some. Reservations about jumping into this right now, simply because of checks and balances. Um, the DPW is our largest, one of our largest departments, huge budgets. And we're hearing from, from Bruce that, that he has staffing issues. Well, is, is the answer to eliminate the board because you have staffing issues? I'm not sure. I'm not sure. So I'm on the fence and I'm, you know, I'm really not certain that this is the time to do this, based on what I'm hearing. Um, you know, I was concerned as a citizen at the time of the change of the form of government. That I wouldn't have a voice in how things evolved. Well, I'm sitting here now, I have a voice, but the point is that, um. I do feel that there is a purpose for a, a board with the department. And it gives a love, a tier, you, you, you know, residents can come to you folks if they have a concern that you then can. Meet with Bruce to discuss. Bruce isn't always available to talk to all of us understandably, so I'm, I'm not sure. Um, I just needed to, to communicate that because I know this all started with, with a previous town manager. And Tom, you've worked very hard on. Putting this together for the bylaw committee and I thank you and I appreciate that, but I'm. As a member of the committee now, I'm, I, I don't know if we had all the information.
So before you start, John, um, I was on the charter commission, Bill Fonseca was on the charter commission. And the statement is absolutely correct, um. When the Charter Commission discussed, uh, the Board of Public Works. It was more of a political issue, uh, deciding to keep the Board of Public Works based on, uh, forms of government that were out there. When they changed from annual town meeting to city form of government, how many boards of public works were kept, how many weren't? What, uh, role that they would play. As we know, our previous, uh, Board of Public Works before the change of government was extremely involved. Um, and had a lot more say and a lot more to do with the town and the development because they had authority. Our thought was and the vote was to keep the, the board. During the transition periods, because we knew that it was going to take five, six, seven years. To switch from a Board of Selectmen into a fully operational city form of government. Um, I feel that we've switched and we've moved into that. Um, I feel the situation, I, I respect the Board of, uh, Public Works. But I do look at our DPW superintendent and their staff. I do look at the amount, um, of work that they do. He's not only creating the files and going to the DPW board to explain. Uh, all the capital projects that are coming up, the equipment they need. But he no sooner gets done with that and then the capital committee is asking him the same exact questions. And I know that because I'm on it and there was many a times he would come in and say, I, I feel like deja vu, I just got through explaining all of this. Um. And I think it's the council's job. More so to look at the intricacies, to look at the enterprise funds. Um, to, to make sure that, you know, the rates are set appropriately to be able to afford everything. I think as an advisory ro- role, um, what. My feel is we're basically, uh, we're tying Bruce's hands a little bit more, making him jump through more hoops on it and. No disrespect to the board, you guys have done wonderful and we appreciate each and every one of you. I just don't think that. I think he should answer to the council and to capital planning and stuff more so than the Board of Public Works. Those are my thoughts. John, you had. Okay.
I would, um, I hear what you say respectfully, but, um. I'd be interested from the manager to see a, a job description for department heads. And, um, Bruce doesn't answer to, I don't believe Bruce answers to. The current DPW, uh, board, I. No, I feel it's a two-way, you know, it's, they're there for advisory capacity. And to bring a perspective, um, from a, from a different angle.
So yeah, becau- sorry, do you mind?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. So because they exist, Bruce has to spend his time. Letting them advise, so he has to go through all these meetings more than once, whereas he, you're right, he only answers to the manager.
Correct.
Right? So.
I could, I could make that same argument about, um. Our, uh, Director of Assessment, uh, of assessors, uh, she has a, uh, assessors who sit. In advisory capacity that she has to meet with. Uh, at least once a month.
Yeah, well, the, the assessing board is, has a more, uh, there's more mass general law involved there, like that's required, right? So whereas the Board of Public Works, there wouldn't, unless they're the. The, the supervisor, they, they don't, it's just the advisory thing, right? From a general law standpoint.
Done.
Uh, I, I do feel, I, I look at it not necessar- I mean, I, I do take. That it, I know that it's the Board of Public Works, but I kind of look at it sort of on a macro level. I just feel like, you know. The seven of us do oversight, that's part of our job as elected officials, um, but you know, we have. Eighty some odd board and commission members of all these different boards and commissions, and I think it is. Helpful to us, helpful to the community. Uh, if we do have a board or commission that's already in standing to empower it. And I just, you know, if it's more resources that are needed, then I definitely think I would be in support of something like that. And I'm not necessarily opposed to, again, in the future, ever dissolving it, but I, I think that if it, I know that what we're doing here. Is obviously a legal and correct way to do it, but I just think, you know. The perception, it should be frankly, the people, in my opinion. Through a ballot question, if we were to ever act, if, if, the way I would ever. Come to support it now, obviously, the six of you could feel differently, but, um, so I don't really, I, I, I look at this, I don't really. Think about it necessarily being the Board of Public Works or the Board of Assessors or anything like that. I look at it in terms of just. The board and commission will leadership to the public. Um, and I feel that's a very important one, um, and I've seen. There are a, uh, crazy number of boards and commissions that this state has, a number of them are advisory, um. But they all, I believe, serve some type of role in regulating or, or even just stringing transparency to something, even if they don't have really much teeth to them. So in my time, I haven't really come across it, but I do, I do understand the concern and this is not, I really, I like to. Take seriously what our department heads suggest and recommend because they are the experts. I think, in my opinion, this is just more of a philosophical view that I believe. So. Those are all my thoughts.
Donovan?
Thanks, Ralph. Um, I'm fully in support of the dissolution. I mean, I think the Board of Public Works did a good job getting us to this point, but I think at this point. It's really just reminiscent of the old form of government that the voters already decided that they wanted to get rid of and switch to having the council represent them. It really reminds me of the conflict that we always had with. The Board of Selectmen and town meeting form of government where, yeah, we had like department heads, but. And some of them were really. Under the direct authority of the Board of Selectmen, but really, there was always that conflict between Board of Selectmen and the Appropriations Committee. Because at the end of the day, you were vying for money for your department, not necessarily who your boss was. And we're kind of in the same position now. With the DPW superintendent where technically, yes, his boss is the town manager. But. He also sort of has to take the input of this advisory committee that really has no legal authority in our form of government anymore. Really, the town council is now the check and balance, so it's not like we're removing checks and balances, we're still here to provide goals and direction. On manager. That then should get conveyed to. The DPW superintendent. And then the town council is already the one that sets the rates for water and sewer. So no matter what the. Board may try to advise, it's always the town manager and the town council that make that ultimate decision. And there's still plenty of other avenues for public input, whether it's to the town manager, to a council. Meeting, to our capital committee meetings, financial oversight, there's. Plenty of other avenues to interject about the DPW's operation and budget.
Yeah, yeah, man.
So I guess this question for Bruce. So my understanding is that. The reason for this is you're spending a lot of time preparing for the meetings, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So. To the folks on the council that are sitting on the fence or would like to keep the board. What is our, if we keep the board? What is the solution to that? And I hear a lot about, well, we should support personnel. We should, you know, but when this, if, let's say we keep it and we tell Bruce, oh yeah, we'll get you a personnel to support it. And it's going to come in front of the FOC next year, right? And we're going to go. Now, we don't want an increase that much. So. For that reason, I, I support the dissolution, I think.
I'll say this, we, if, you know, replay this clip. I'll come back in six or seven months and argue that they should have more personnel for this particular reason.
Okay.
On this, to help with this.
So.
I would just ask our manager, just remind us of the personnel. In the DPW. The, I'm speaking specifically of. There, there's clerical help there, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Yeah, an office manager and, and full staff upstairs is three. Uh, that take care of all that, yeah.
So those individuals can't assist in the preparation for.
Uh.
I'm, I'm asking because I don't know.
I don't know, I, yeah, they, um, they're straight out as well. I'm sure Bruce would back that up.
Oh, I, I don't doubt that.
The, um, you can imagine the DPW receives a lot of calls on any given day. Uh. And so that, i- it's really hard and I don't know that and I don't want to. Downplay anybody's role, but they're not going to have the specific, uh. Expertise to explain capital projects and the budget and this kind of thing, right? Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Um, it really needs to come from, and it's not just Bruce's time. He's got a deputy that has to do the stormwater and Daryl's got to give him highway and. Now Jonathan's got to do all the building updates and Felix with water and sewer, so. Every time we have a meeting, there's an update from each one of these people that takes a long time to put together. Um, so i- it's not just Bruce. Um, the, the department itself, it spends a lot of time. Putting information together and again. More than once, every time we have to go through a, a capital plan or a, or a budget.
So before you, I just want to interject, it, it's not just the DPW. So it's also LCAP filming the meetings, it's also the minutes being done, um, and like I said. Cur with Connor, that the thought process. A- as we went on, it's the council's responsibility to do more of this and. We, we have to. Move along in the change in the form of government is the way I see it, which is what I interpreted from what he was saying. Um, that's my thought, but Marilyn.
Well, I'm struggling, is this the beginning, um. I don't mean to sound dramatic, but is this the beginning of looking at other boards? And saying, you know, maybe we need to eliminate the Council on Aging Advisory Board or the Rec Departments Board. Or, I mean, we do have. Wonderful people serving in these capacities. Who really care about the town and they bring a different perspective to that process. And yeah, it can get mind boggling to the department head because. You're getting all of these suggestions from these well-meaning people and you don't have the staff or the money to follow through. But I'm thinking, Bruce, you have a deputy, correct? Is, I mean, and I'm not trying to micromanage here and, and say, can you do your job better? Can you delegate? I mean, but is this the answer to just eliminate the board because you, you need more people, you need more help?
It's about efficiency, Marilyn, really what it comes down to. That's really what it comes down to and like to echo. Um, what Mr. Page says, I go for. All my annual budgets, my water and sewer rates, my capital planning, uh, my operational budget, I have to go through. Sometimes seven to almost ten meetings. And like you said, and go through this process to get to the end. And it seems like it takes me because of the process. Of this for me to do this, so for capital planning. I start now, typically September first, I start that for two months to plan that. Then I go submit it to the Board of Public Works typically by November first, we go through the holidays. Then it's ready for submittal to the town manager. Um, in the same, my operational budget, it takes me six to, I, you know, I'm just pulling this out of my head right now, but six. To eight months to do, to, for the process to take place. It just seems so inefficient, um, for me to do this. And this is like you said, why I'm supporting it, uh, through the town manager. And like you said, you're not losing any transparency. I forward all my annual reports to the town manager, I give them. Updates, um, to share with you guys, um, at the town council level. So like I said, it's about efficiency and efficiency only for the department.
Thank you.
The one other thing I'd like to point out, and I'm going to give kudos to our town manager. Um, I read the charter, um, in a section of the charter, it says the town manager has the right to, um. Dissolve the boards, remove the members, um. And with his interpretation and reading it. He thought it was best and that maybe it was a little gray because of multiple member bodies. That we should look to do a reorganization and come in front of the council and, um, and I appreciate that, um. Because I, I'll tell you the truth, I told Mary McNally when she brought it up, I'm like, no, you have the authority, it says it right here. And it was him that. Brought it up and said, you know, let's, let's make sure this is done, let's go through the council, let's make sure that it's proper.
I'm sorry, does this mean like dissolve people before their terms and so like, I'm talking about other boards too, but like.
Have the ready to appoint and remove at any time.
At any time for any couple.
Any cause, exactly. Tom, did you want to add?
I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments and. One was to regardless of who it fell on or. You shouldn't have found out at that first meeting and I probably was in a position at the time. I think I have both your cell phone numbers and so for my part, I apologize that you found out that day that way. That wasn't right and you're right, it was, it was borderline disrespectful, so. I will apologize for that for sure, from, from this chair right here. All right, so I'm sorry about the, regardless of how this goes down today. I apologize that you guys found out that way because you deserve better. Um, just from a, just one last thing in terms of the, the, the Board of Public Works recommended rates and fees to the manager. And the, the, the manager had already taken Bruce's recommended fees and started the budget process, so. There was meetings after. The rates and fees were set by the manager to give to you that. Bruce had to still go back to another meeting so that they could approve rates and fees that. Were only going to be sort of shown to the manager and not used, so I, I'm not saying. You know, that. you know, that I take that as, take it as, take that on its face, I I suppose. We we had already started the budget process with the rates and fees that were set up with through the manager and the town accountant and Bruce and Felix. And we're sort of already sent through the budget process before the Board of Public Works recommended a rate. So that was just a whole extra amount of time that passed that we were already working on the budget.
If I understand correctly, too, um, there were some issues this year with enterprise funds and
We we had, we had um
Finance Director Doug Deep to look at, to make sure that the rates were set at a rate that covers.
So through, I think through COVID, the the idea was to try to keep the rates from changing too much to kind of give everybody a break. Um, that obviously has its detriment. And we were also using a usage number that um was high. So if you don't get to that usage during the year, you don't get the revenue that you're proposing and you're running the department in the red, which is obviously not good. Um, so some changes had to be made this year uh to to fix that.
Bill, please.
I I like to 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 challenge you at a few of those statements, but and I agree, the process was a little screwed up because it got caught going forward with a rate that the board didn't actually approve because you have to get going and and there was timing off. But there's different ways of looking at doing the calculations on rates that that can be challenged one way or another or be challenging for the group. And and so to say one was not right versus another is not exactly fair to some degree. It would be interesting to see how much water is being consumed or billable versus what we pay Springfield. And as you well know, there was a big spike up of the loss of water in the system from five percent to almost 10%. And yet the board was challenging Bruce to do some analysis of where is it going? And I've been waiting for that or the board's been waiting for that for a few months since we've done this rate. We haven't got any input from Bruce, but you have all the data to do the analysis. And to have an excuse of, well, there's old meters is not acceptable. I I operate on data driven basis to make decisions. And there's no data to to the point of saying, well, it's just old meters all the time. But when you have a spike from five to almost 10, nine point six percent, that has a big influence on on a setting of rates. And yet you're not addressing it. Whether it's from the town council, from the advisory committee, from the town council, that's a financial review, they don't get into that. But five percent drop of revenue or or billable items i- is a big impact on rates. And that's what the board was advising Bruce to take some action.
So you said it was five percent last year and now it's nine point six?
It's got the numbers.
Like it, we don't have to worry, sorry.
It it should be known, if you're going to throw that information on the table, let's throw the facts out there. So the board is is really challenging Bruce to do a better job in in these particular areas. Now, I I don't think Bruce is the one that's going to do the data analysis. There are people in the in the in the group that should be able to do it. If not, we should be able to get somebody to do it. But that's what the board is there for, is to make these challenges in operations and and see where we go forward. Sooner or later, you're going to end up with a problem because when you hit the 10% loss in a system, the state is going to get on you. We were at nine point six. You're just avoiding an an issue.
Yes, I'll be quick. Uh, just want to say, uh, I think Bruce and his team doing an excellent job. I came here tonight because I think that the beginning of this process was was handled poorly. I think that's been addressed. If it is the the decision to uh dissolve this board to make the department more efficient, okay. This is the way that 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 the department's been reporting to the board for quite some time. So it's nothing new. It's it's not like we asked for all of this information, uh at least not during my time here. Anyways, I have no further comments. Um, and thanks again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to to speak out, too.
Absolutely.
It it's been a pleasure of serving on the board for the, since the change of government. Uh, I think Bruce has improved overall since I've been on the board. I seen the improvement in Bruce himself. But I do believe Bruce is is stretched out and somebody should review all the activities that he's doing and get back to his basic job. And 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 that that should be forthcoming. I would think that Tom, Tom knows it as good as anybody. But but there is a limit of of where he can be at one time. And I think there's a lot of challenges with the town that's on Bruce. A lot of big projects are going to be going in, whether it's North Main Street and 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 uh Heritage Park. I don't think one man can handle all that from an engineering standpoint and and he's got a new fellow, Mark, working for himself. There's a transition with Tom moving up. Congratulations. But but that, that was a big loss to Bruce, having Tom move out of the, out of the DPW. And uh I think he's feeling the effects of that at this point. Um, but but I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and
We appreciate it.
And uh look forward to serving the town in other different ways. But overall, I wish Tom good luck.
I I saw your your hand wanted to go up, so.
I think uh just a final point to sum all of that up. I think if anything, that's a a good reason why we should dissolve the board. If we're reducing the amount of duplication of effort that not only Bruce is spending, but other members in his department and even people on the town manager's side are spending preparing for all of these duplicated efforts, whether it's to present in front of the council or its subcommittees or the town managers committees and so forth. Then the department could actually get back to managing and doing the work instead of having to talk about the work.
Don, is there anyone online with their hand up?
Oh, sorry.
And is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I would bring it to the board. This is a public hearing, so I would accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Or do we have to do a roll call?
To close the
Public hearing, it's just a vote, right?
Right.
Okay, we're going to do that again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed. Would someone like to make a motion? Or further discussion? Or how would we like to handle that?
I move to approve a proposed bylaw amendment reorganizing the Board of Public Works as presented and recommended by the Bylaw Review Committee.
I don't want to second it.
I second. An emotion made and seconded. Is there further discussion with regards to this? I know this has been um a lengthy discussion on it. And I know there's pros and cons both ways.
I just think that um when the Bylaw Committee met, there's, there were pieces of information that we didn't have available for us to discuss. I feel that we have some issues with staffing, absolutely. I, you know, I think we shouldn't throw the paperwork away. I personally feel that we need to look at helping Bruce within his department to give him hopefully give him the staff that he needs, but I don't think the answer is to suddenly eliminate the board. So I would not be voting in favor of it tonight. Sorry.
So going forwards, I think for efficiency, um, I think for advancing the form of government. This was always the intention going forwards. I think this is a good time to do it. And so I am in favor. And is there any other discussion before the vote?
Yeah, what information wasn't available at the Bylaw Review Committee that is new tonight?
We we received information from our town manager, from our um from the department head, but we didn't hear the other side of the story. And it's important. I really feel that that boards do serve. Um, now, you know, you can argue how, whatever, however you want, but um, I I'm sure the board is available um in terms of accessibility to the public that eliminates phone calls that are going to Bruce. You know, I'm sure that's part of it. Um, I have always felt in my town service that boards offered a perspective that sometimes we needed to hear.
And I I don't want to raise six as the last thing I'm going to say, but I think because this is the first type of vote that this body has had, I think it will set a precedent. I think that's what everybody should keep in mind that I think in the future, MGL could always change, change um legality of different other boards. So I think keeping that in mind as well.
Anna.
I think I just really quick. I think I'm having a hard time only because I see how passionate and dedicated the board is. So um I just kind of wanted to point that out that it doesn't go unnoticed how um passionate they are about it. But um, yeah. That's making my decision more difficult, but definitely recognize it.
So I will point out that we did have a department that was dissolved. So this isn't like the first item.
I mean, more like a
But we did it in a different, in a different manner by um
Unfund.
Unfund, by defunding it instead of coming in front for a reorganization. Any other questions or comments? I am going to do this as a roll call vote. I will start with myself. I am a yes. Uh, Kathy.
No.
Matt.
Yes.
Anna.
Yes.
Marilyn.
No.
Connor.
Yes.
John.
No.
Did anyone count?
Three, four.
I believe that's four, four to dissolve, three not. Yeah, so that motion passes, order. Okay. Where are we? Eight, B four. Does that sound correct?
Financial.
Oh, you missed eight V one, yes. Sorry, I should have known that.
It's not, I mean, I don't like something.
Oh, thanks. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Um, we are jumping to financial matters, which is eight V one. Uh, Finance Director Kim Collins in Hilltop Security, uh bonding presentation for funding a new high school.
Don stepped up for a minute.
I need to pass and to put the lights on there.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Five minutes.
Okay, two minutes.
So at this time, the chair um suggests that we take a five minute break.
Sorry.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Don. Welcome back. We will be continuing on with our September 12th, 2023 meeting. Um, our next uh agenda item is eight V one. This is um a report from our Finance Director, Kim Collins, and Hilltop Security with regarding to a bonding presentation for funding a new high school. So is Kim in the audience and?
And.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Took me a minute.
Okay.
Uh, good evening. I'm Abby Jeffers from Hilltop Security. Kim, I didn't know if you wanted to lead off or if we should just jump in. Um, I, it's probably better if you jump, if you jump in and then um I can answer any other questions they have. Sure, sure. Thank you for having us tonight. Uh, my name is Abby Jeffers. I'm a Senior Vice President over at Hilltop Securities and my colleague Peter Fraser, who's a Managing Director at Hilltop Securities, has joined us as well. Um, we represent and serve approximately 180 different communities in Massachusetts. So that's towns, cities, school districts with their borrowing needs. Um, we've been working with East Long Meadows since the eighties, so we have all your your extensive debt history and and everything like that. And Kim reached out and her team um asked for some projections to regarding your upcoming school and possibly pool projects. So we provided some schedules based on, um, we are told it's approximately $177 million school project with MSBA aid around 63 million. So the town's local share of funding would be approximately 114 and change. The town has already approved the feasibility study of such project, which currently has short term notes or bond anticipation notes that are outstanding and currently re- receiving reimbursement uh from the MSBA for that project. Um, I believe Kim provided a schedule on 30 years for the school, 30 years for the pool, and then aggregated together. I just wanted to go over here real quick. So the um rates we've incorporated into these schedules are conservative based on today's rates. And we do that because um obviously you're not coming to the buy market today. And a lot depends on the cash flow and timing of the different phases of a project. So when we try to give you an example of what the overall cost would be, we just look at it as a, as a a quick look at financing the majority of your local share um outside the gate, but that when the project actually starts going through, um, we actually may, the town may issue it in different phases, in different um in different chunks along the way. You may be familiar from the feasibility study, but the construction aspect is financed a similar way through the MSBA where you receive monthly reimbursements on eligible project costs. And the MSBA withholds 5% of every reimbursement until the project is complete. Once the project's complete, then they do an audit of the project and then the town receives its final reimbursement. The order that is written when you approve the debt actually states that any borrowing authority is automatically reduced by any reimbursement aid that the town has received. So bond council and um us, we make sure that the town only issues on a long term basis your local share of project cost. So we're really uh careful about making sure that the town does not over issue for any projects. Um, I think that was just a quick overview. I'm not sure if you wanted to get into the numbers or if there's any specifics on borrowing in general or anything that we could help understand the process better.
I actually add one thing, sorry. Ralph, before you start, I just wanted to mention, um, at the time that I spoke with you, Abby, I did provide that one page impact with um the 30 years. What I also provided the council, just so they had all of the information, were the other amortization schedules for the pool and for the school with options of 20, 25 and 30 years. So they wanted to be able to see all of those options separately, so they do have those as well. That's great.
So I'm going to jump in, Abby. I'll I'll start. So you have the history of the town of East Long Meadow and our debt. Can you tell us if we've ever gone out for a 30 year bond in the past?
Currently, I looked back, you had not, you have not, but you also have not issued debt to this extent in the past either. This is a very large project for the town, probably the biggest in your history of borrowing. Um, having said that, 30 year debt isn't uncommon that um for other municipalities that have been issuing school debt or or larger projects of this size. A lot of communities, um, I believe, as Kim mentioned, we give you various schedules because um it's nice to see what the impact will be over 30 years versus 20 years versus 25. And the um the interest cost over that time as well, because that's a big impact as well.
Yeah, and that's what I was looking at. If we did 114 million and I'm looking at just the school, it's between a 20 year, which looked like a four and a half percent um bond number as compared to a 30 year, which was 5%. Um, you're looking roughly $45 million in interest difference. That that that's a huge chunk of money. That's a police station, that's a fire station. Um, that's a lot of projects. And that's why I wanted to know whether or not uh we had ever offered a bond for that length.
I know.
I know.
Um, I, can you explain or can you tell me what the impact for borrowing on the town will be? Um, going through with this project. I mean, we have a, a ton of other projects coming up. Um, you know, we have, we've been in discussions to redo a park, uh, for heritage park for nine million dollars. We know we have a police station that we're probably looking, I would be guessing ten million. At least that may be on the low side. Um, is this going to affect our ability to borrow additional?
So, yeah, that's a great question. So, and I think in port, it's important to, to mention too, the town has a really high credit rating, um, a double A plus. So that's one notch below the highest possible rating you can obtain. And so that also factors into when you enter the bond market, the higher your credit rating, the lower your borrowing cost. As I mentioned before, these rates are conservative because we don't know exactly when you're going to come to borrow. And what we don't want someone to do is hang their hat on saying, well, you said it's going to cost X amount. And if it comes in higher, then there's a lot more explaining to do than if you come in much lower or lower, I should say. Um, the project most likely would be exempt from proposition two and a half. So the rating agencies would look at it as a town's willingness to, if it's approved, obviously, at an election, that, that it would be a town's willingness to take on this debt. Um, so it wouldn't necessarily be a negative, uh, a credit negative by any means. Um, but obviously it, it would increase your debt burden because you do have really low debt burden, according to Standard and Poor's, who rated you most recently in January of twenty twenty-two. Um, there are other debt factors that they look at as well as your OPEB and your pension liability. So, um, taking on debt of this size, it's great to have a, a plan together, um, as to how it's going to be financed and the, the overall impact of the entire project. You do have your capital plan, um, that S and P has looked at, that the town reviews, I believe annually. Um, and S and P has known about the potential school project coming up, so it wouldn't be, um, you know, out of the blue that they've heard about it because you've already financed your feasibility study. Peter, did you want to add anything? Did I?
Sorry about that. Um, I wasn't sure if I was muted or not. Uh, yeah, the, the, to your question uh, about whether this is crowding out other projects, as Abby said, th- this would have to be excluded from Prop two and a half, which provides, uh, additional re- revenue to cover the debt service. You're about, uh, somewhere, uh, above two million in unused levy capacity currently. So you still have some available levy capacity, either for additional operating costs or additional debt that would fall within the levy limit. Um, but, but clearly if you've got other big ticket items, um, that those would likely, uh, need a debt exclusion as well in order for the, for you to be able to afford it, uh, under Prop two and a half. But, um, with respect to sort of the legal limits, uh, for being able to borrow for other projects, you do have capacity. But it, it's more, uh, a question of whether the voters think they can afford it that more than whether the bond market thinks you can afford it or whether there are legal constraints with respect to debt limits that would impact you.
Nope. That's good information. Like I said, uh, part of my concern was, uh, just that all of a sudden you go from, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have roughly thirteen million, um, in long-term debt. And all of a sudden you jump up to a hundred and thirty million in long-term debt. I just wanted to make sure that our double A plus rating doesn't plummet. And anything in the future that we borrow is at double the interest rate or something. Um, and that's why we asked the professionals. Does anyone have any questions before I continue on?
I just. But, um, so, you know, I feel like maybe this has already been said, but, um, when would the bond, if we were to say voters approve it in November, we go along in the projects process that we're expect that, you know, we're projecting, when would the bond be sort of taken out? And then my second question to that is, um, i- is there anticipation of these bond rates changing in a significant way as it relates to bond rates always being lowered or hired? You know, how does, I'm not a financial expert, but, um, just sort of explain that sort of process to the public.
Sure. So basically, once a project's approved, um, the town has to satisfy the legal requirement, showing that you satisfied the state local, uh, bylaws and then the, the project was approved in accordance to all the, the laws and regulations, um, for borrowing authorizations. After that, we ask for a construction cash flow. And on top of that, we find out when you're going to go out for bidding for the project. Because what we don't want you to do is, um, as I believe someone mentioned earlier in the meeting tonight, is open bids and find out that the bids are higher than what you've authorized or, you know, vice versa. So we would obviously be in touch with your finance team and figure out, do you want to, um, once we have the cash flow, the estimated construction cash flow, the timing of all the phases, we, then we look at the bond market. Are rates high and we expect them to come down? Do you want to issue maybe short-term debt for a little bit? Or is it conversely where you want to lock in rates now and take advantage? Um, so we, we do this analysis at every issuance. And with a school project such as this, we also review your cash flow almost on a, on a, um, semi-annual basis. Because projects can be accelerated or decelerated. So we want to make sure that, um, your, your funding is always, um, sufficient to cover cash flow needs, but also that you're not coming into the market before funds are really even needed as well.
Thank you.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Um, this is also for Hilltop. Um, if we, uh, went the way of a debt exclusion for a hundred and fourteen million, and as Ralph has said, that there are other, uh, big capital projects that need some attention in the next couple of years. If they were large enough that we felt debt exclusion was the best way, would, um, we be less favorable as a, uh, a client to get an additional debt exclusion? Because we'd, we've already taken out a hundred and fourteen million dollar debt exclusion?
There would be no impact on the market or the, necessarily, um, the rating agency's perspective. They view debt exclusions as the town's willingness to proceed with the projects. Um, it becomes if it's more of a project that would have to be financed inside the levy to make sure that there's enough, uh, funds available. Um, Peter, is there anything you wanted to add to that one?
Yeah, I, typically debt exclusions are, are viewed favorably. Because again, as Abby's saying, it's an expression of the taxpayer's willingness to raise their own taxes to fund the project. It also provides additional rev- resources, revenue to pay for projects. So the, the bondholders like that, that you're raising more money to be able to pay them back. And, and the rating agencies would look at that favorably too. You know, to flip it around, if you were trying to, trying to do this project without a debt exclusion, I think it'd be essentially impossible. Because if you're paying seven million dollars in, uh, debt per year and you only have two million, let's say, of unused levy capacity, that means you'd have to make cuts in other existing programs in order to be, pay, pay the debt service. And, and so clearly a debt exclusion, whether it's for this project or for future other projects is viewed favor- favorably.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
Connor, I saw your hand up earlier.
Thanks, Ralph. Um, you had mentioned like that our current rating was like double A plus and it's like one notch below like the highest. Is there something that's like holding us back from getting the highest rating? And then if so, would that actually move the interest rate needle by any sizable amount?
Sure. So that's, that's, um, a really good question. And just to give you a quick overview, anytime you come to the bond market, you will speak, the, the town will speak with the rating agency. And the rating agency doesn't just look at your debt. They're going to look at other factors such as your, the, the economy, the state and local economy. They're going to look at your finances, if you're producing budgetary surpluses or deficits and, and what's behind there. They're going to look at your liquidity, as I mentioned before, your debt, but also your management, and that includes any policies and procedures you have on hand. Um, the difference between double A plus and triple A is changing all the time, and that's known as a credit spread. So as interest rates, um, rise, the difference between the tru- the, what prices at a triple A versus a double A plus, um, widen. So that, so it, it's more of a difference. In lower interest rate environments, that difference is, is, could be minimal. Um, so it really depends on snapshot of time regarding what the cost differential will be. Um, anytime that the town does speak with the rating agency, I know that they always prepare and they always, um, provide all the documentation that S and P requires, which is a copy of any, you know, revenue projections uh, with funding sources, a copy of any investments, um, you know, any policies and procedures regarding reserves or debt management. So those are all things, um, you know, we could dig deeper into what could move it or not. But a lot of the times to get to that triple A, it's such, um, sometimes you have to build reserves so high that where you're already at a one notch below that it's, it may be counterproductive for the, the objective of the town for what it's trying to achieve.
Do rating agencies factor in the type of projects, so in this case, school? And then obviously seeing that there could be like economic or property value impacts, would that, does that differentiate from other projects? Does that sort of, would that hypothetically help the town's case? With the credit agencies?
Right. Um, yeah, I mean, they obviously are watching what's going on in the economy, you know, it's, the property values have increased, you know, over the past decade or so and everything like that.
If it brings like an economic benefit to the community, will they kind of see that if it's a school, if it, you know?
Oh, for sure, for sure. Obviously, you know, um, communities with, you know, new schools to, to tend to bring in, you know, newer families, stuff like that. And so that obviously helps, um, the econ- the economic score of the community. If you have more services and, and newer things to bring in, um, you know, the income that helps pay for the debt.
Yeah, mu- mu- municipalities that have a reputation for good schools, there, it reflects in higher home values for instance. Um, and, and becomes a magnet for, uh, folks moving into town. So that, and that pushes up, uh, those values. They definitely understand that relationship wi- with respect to, uh, whether it's a school or, you know, a public works or, you know, public safety complex or something. They, they're not, uh, they're not putting too much, uh, difference into their calculus in terms of the rating based on what the purpose is. It's all general obligation debt, meaning that it's, uh, the full faith and credit is backing, uh, all of your debt, whether it's water sewer or school or otherwise.
Connor, go. That's okay. Jump right in.
Another one. Um, so of course, like the timing, we don't necessarily know when that's going to happen, but just hypothetically speaking, if we were to issue long-term debt, say whether that's six months or a year from now, and interest rates are still fairly high. Let's say like two years from now, the Fed decides to cut rates by say two percent or something. Is there an opportunity for the town to like refinance its long-term debt to reduce its overall debt service burden?
Yeah. So that's a great question. So most bond issues, which is your long-term debt that's issued for greater than one year, carry a call feature, it's called, at year nine, um, these days, nine or 10. And so the first nine or 10 years of the bond issue are fixed, so you can't prepay them. But once you're within ninety days of that call date, you can then refinance them and refund them for lower rates. The town has actually, um, done that in the past. I think it was your two thousand and eleven bonds. Um, it had, um, it's some, I believe, cash and we called it in. We called in some old debt and paid it off, um, on that call day.
And the, the, the other thing that I mentioned that Abby had alluded to before is, you know, with the construction cash flow, you may decide, geez, let's do short-term financing, bond anticipation notes during the construction phase, which has the, and pay interest only for a couple of years, uh, until you know exactly what your share is and then do either a series of bond issues or a single bond issue to, to cover, uh, the costs. And, you know, we, we don't pretend to know where interest rates will be in the future. And that's one of the reasons Abby's, uh, uh, projections are conservative. Right now, you know, we're, we're giving you numbers calculated at five percent. It's probably closer to four percent right now, maybe even a little lower if you were to go today. Um, so know that there's some cushion built in there, but, um, and if rates came down next year, obviously we can reassess and, and provide new projections. But, but that will, what the rate environment is at the time you need the money will also inform what, what you're going to do in terms of, do we lock in long-term or do we roll short-term notes? One, in the hope that rates will come down in the future. Um, but, but we just, uh, honestly can't know. Um, nobody does. So we're, what we're trying to do is create, create estimates based on conservative projections.
So Kim, I have a question for you, being our finance director. Our thirteen million in outstanding, um, expenses, long-term debt. What are we looking at as far as, um, are we looking ten years to be paid off? Is some of that coming, um, or, or be paid off shortly?
There, there actually isn't a lot that's going to be paid off in the near term. I think we just paid off the library debt. Yep. But I think, I, I, and I don't know off the top of my head how, how long it was, but I remember looking to see, and it, it wasn't like anything that you're going to see immediately in the next five years or so. I don't know if you know that offhand, Abby.
Yeah, we, we've got that. And Abby, do you have it up too, in terms of what the roll-off looks like?
Yeah, it looks like your final debt roll-up on your existing debt is twenty forty-two right now. And that's inclusive of all your debts. So that's general fund debt, water debt, sewer debt, um, and everything together.
But, but with respect to the way it rolls off, um, you know, you, you had, you had payments of over three million this year. It drops down to about two point four next year, about two million after that. So each year that goes by, some capacity is opening up, not enough to fit a hundred and seventeen million dollar school certainly. But it takes a little bit of the sting out of that debt service appropriation and, uh, may open up some capacity, not necessarily for the school, but for some normal capital items that you'd be able to layer on without really getting the, the full brunt of it.
Kathy. So would it be fair to say, given what you've just explained and what, uh, Kim has, uh, alluded to that, um, it, that would be a typical profile for a suburban town such as, such as this, that, you know, you acquire debt for water and sewer infrastructure projects or, you know, the library was a big one. But, uh, you know, we have some other smaller ones, but that, that's typical then, correct? That's not extraordinary to say that twenty forty-two. I mean, it'd be like owning your own home. You take at least a thirty-year mortgage. And so if you only focus on, oh, that's thirty more years to pay off, then you'd lose your mind thinking about it. But I, I just want to establish for the, the public, um, that our, our, uh, debt obligations right now are typical and normal for a community with, um, our financial portfolio.
Yes, and it, and, um, you should take comfort too, in that master of law doesn't allow you to finance debt any longer than its useful life. So whether you're financing a fire truck versus say a DPW building, they have different useful lives. So you can't, you know, finance a fire truck for thirty years when you know it's not going to be around that long. So there are, um, certain regulations already in place and mastered a law that, um, allows how, allows you and, and instruct you on how you can issue and structure your debt.
And if I could ask through the chair.
Please.
Based on that industry standard, what would the useful life of a, a high school be? What it, what, what does the, in the bond setters, the, the rate setters regard as a typical useful life?
So master of law limits it to thirty years. Um, however, the useful life of most school buildings are much longer. As we've.
That's what I'm getting at. I, I understand that we're limited to thirty, but what, what is a useful life of a school building in, in your expertise and?
MSBA, uh, I think as part of their, uh, program is looking for a fifty-year, uh, useful life for school buildings that it's participating. So, yeah, your point's well taken. But as you know, there, there are some. So, yeah, your point's well taken. But as you know, there there are some schools out there that are 100 years old. And still working, but uh but that that's relatively rare now with all the technology that's being built in.
Thank you.
So our 13 million dollars outstanding debt. Um, I know our appropriation committee before that change of government was working extremely hard to get our debt down. Um, for a a a city, town our size, that's extremely reasonable, isn't it?
Oh, yes.
It's actually considered quite low.
That's and kudos and kudos to our appropriation committee back then for for realizing that we were gonna have facilities that need to be done. Um, and working on it. Anna, Matt?
Yeah, my question's uncovered.
Connor, Marilyn?
Those are the only ones I thought of.
Right, right.
Yeah, I I can't, I can't open it up. Sorry, Ross. Um, I I thank you both. I thank you, Kim, for your time. I think you've answered most of our questions uh going forwards for now. And we greatly appreciate you sticking around till almost 8:30 at night to speak to us.
Thank you for having us. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, they're part of the project.
So it's been brought to my attention that we have um school building committee here and school committee. I would ask if they had any questions um with regards to this or any thoughts? Or would anyone like to speak with regards to it? Steve, anything? Gordon, nothing? You guys are all set?
Explain it pretty well.
Just wanted you to have the opportunity.
Thank you. I'd say so.
Oh, come on.
Hold you. I knew it.
No, I just Craig Thompson, Chair of the School Committee, member of the School Building uh Committee as well. Um, just in terms of the bond length, we've been talking 30 years. 30 years is the number that we've been discussing with residents in terms of impact on the town. So, you know, unless there's a real uh push to change that. I think it would, you know, severely increase the tax implication on a yearly basis, which is what we're trying to limit as much as possible. So, um, I just wanted to mention that. That's what we've been working off of. I know 20 years was mentioned, which I would love to be able to do, but I think based on the size of the bond and the impact on the on the average taxpayer. It just seems 30, 30 years is more sensible, so.
It's a reflection of both the school committee and the building committee and a broad sensor.
Yeah, I I would I would say that. I it's been the general consensus because of the size of the project, just because of the timing that we're 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 building this project. That that 30 years would would be the most reasonable in terms of impact on the taxpayer.
I just mentioned that perhaps there may be a an opportunity to do the school at one rate and the pool at another rate. Like do the pool length, term length, and at 20 years versus 30 years.
Again, I think the implication on the taxpayer will be greater with a 20-year bond and and just finishing the budget for the uh the pool building. Um, it's certainly not nearly as significant as the school i- impactful, but will be an impact, so.
I know.
Um, I I would leave that to you and to look at it. I don't know the difference. I don't know the sheet that you have. I don't know what it costs for 20 years versus 30. I can imagine what the school costs for 20 years versus 30, so.
Forty.
So actually, um, the latest paperwork that I have in front of me per hundred thousand. Um, this is a 20-year, and I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit, which is the average. It's $360 per hundred thousand. And a 30-year is 306. So per hundred thousand, so you're looking roughly $50 difference per hundred thousand. So a $300,000 house, you're looking roughly $150, go from a 30-year to a 20. And you would be looking at 46 million dollar savings to the town.
So that it's only a 20% difference to go from a a 30 to a 20-year? How can it be? That doesn't make that doesn't make numerical sense. It would have to be at least 50%, right?
No, not even.
10, 10 less years of interest.
So you're.
Okay. I mean, you have it. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, well, you're looking per thousand on a 30-year, $3.06 per thousand and 3.59 per 20. Um, so roughly a 50 cent per thousand difference. Um, and that that what I'm looking at, and again, I brought up and I asked Kim for information on the 20-year. Um, because my concern is spending 46 million dollars over an additional 10 years and strapping the town with. A large debt for 30 years rather than getting the debt paid off in 20. And I think that's something for the council to look at. Um, again, I like options. I I I like to have all the figures so that you can make an informed decision, and that's what I've been trying to do. And it's really important, like, it's like, it's a perfect example of a short and a long-term sort of situation. You know, in the in the short term, it'd be 150 bucks on average per hundred, whatever, cheaper. But then, you know, I still, I'm also wrestling with the fact that the town would have a 4- 45 million dollars extra. And, you know, we're like, I mean, you know, the budget is 60-something a year and and and, you know, I'm I'm not talking about the merits of. I'm just, I'm looking, I'm simply looking at the comparison of the two, not necessarily making a statement.
Looking it all up.
45 million.
Yeah, you're not coming out.
No, you're not. I mean, I I mean, I mean, on the, sorry, I'm sorry, let me clarify. I mean, on the, I mean, on the interest as we're having this discussion.
Ralph, do you have a e- estimated payment for the average taxpayer? Because we had estimated 1,200-dollar impact for for 349,000. Do you have that 20 versus 30-year? That would be more of a applicable number.
So, yeah, per hundred thousand, a 20-year is 358. So 358 times 3.5, um, would give you a 350,000.
I'm kidding, huh?
I know.
That's Ralph's doing it. He's doing it.
$1,253.
Okay, 1,250. So what's 30? What's the 20?
Kim's got it.
Okay.
Kim?
Yeah, because I have.
Yes, sorry. I was waiting for somebody to look up. Okay. Um, so I'm looking at the um 20 versus, you know, the 30 years. You're looking at, on average, for the 20-year and, you know, keep in mind, part of that debt is at four and a half percent. Part of that debt is at 5%, so you're saving a little bit on the interest rate. But you're looking like 1,220 versus 1,040 for a 30-year. And, you know, clearly, from a financial standpoint, yes, you're paying a lot more in interest over a 30-year span. And the only reason that you would make a decision, you know, to do that would be the impact that it has on the taxpayers. And also, you know, this is something that Hilltop brought up. That is a very good point. I don't think they brought it up tonight, but in speaking with them in the past. Um, you know, you could do it over 20 years. There's only so many people within your community that are taking on that debt. Whereas when you break it out over 30 years, you're looking at more um families that are moving into town that are also paying their fair share as well. So, you know, I mean, it's really just a question of how affordable do you want to make this for the community? As opposed to, you know, is it worth it to pay that much more in interest for the for the bonding?
And if I remember right, from attending school building committee meetings, um, pretty much from the start when we were talking numbers. We were talking somewhere 1,200, 1,300. And let me here put you right in there. Uh, so, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't adjust anything. I mean, that's, it it just, it, to me, it just helps on the long term.
Like, so the 30-year was 1,250?
No. Kim, 30?
30 years, 1,039, and the 20-year is 12, like 1220.
1220.
So you're, they're paying less with the 30-year, but also keep in mind, this doesn't include the pool. That comparison that you're looking at is just for the building.
Yep, nope, I understand that. Uh, Anna?
It's 25.
It's about 1,100. And those are all based on average um single-family value, which I think is about 340,000?
Yes, 339.
I think she's four and a half, okay.
So, I mean, again, the numbers that came through, uh, a 20-year is four and a half, a 25-year was 4.75 calculated. And a 30-year was 5%. That's how they were estimated. And again, it it depends on timing of the bonding, when it's taken out. These are just to get us in the ballpark, know what we're looking at. And I just, like I said, I personally think it's important for the council to look at as a whole and analyze and go from there.
Let's give him the pool numbers, Ralph.
Sorry?
Um, so they were looking at the pool numbers. Um, I believe you gave me an amortization chart instead of a per thousand chart when you sent it to me.
I did. The the.
Came out to about 43 cents per thousand for 30-year and roughly 50 or a 20. Is that close?
So that's close for the 30. What was it for the 20? It's so tiny. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading it, but.
I I was guessing on the 20 because of the numbers you gave me and I had to do it up myself. I think I came out with roughly 50 cents uh per thousand on the 20, 43 for the 30.
Yeah, that seems about right. And, you know, like I said, when I did the one-page comparisons, they've been based on 30 years, just because that's, when I started going to the building committees. That's um what they wanted to see at that point. Once we, you know, once you get an understanding of whether you are looking at 20, 25, 30 years. I'd like to be consistent in that one-page presentation so that everybody's looking at the same thing over and over again.
Get 140, 165, Ralph, quickly.
Yes.
So just combined, combined on the 30-year, then you're at 1,200, right? Combined. For the average taxpayer, give or take. Yep. And then. 165 plus the 1220, it'd be 1385-ish. Okay, yep, thank you.
That that sounds about right, like. Um, I had a a a really good time. Um, thank you, Kim, for sending me that. When I looked at the list, I went, oh, my God, how do I figure this out? I I did pretty good, actually, it sounds like. Do we have any other questions from the council at this time?
Can I ask a quick question with that?
I I'm not gonna open it to the public. We still have um four more bylaws to read in. Uh, we're looking probably another hour and a half here tonight. So, um, September 21st is the school building committee meeting. These are all numbers that'll be going to that. They will have this information. I don't know if Kim will be there. Kim, are you planning on making that meeting or not?
Yes.
A forum. Okay. So with no other questions, I would thank you. And Connor, you're good.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. Do you need me for any of the other financial stuff?
I didn't.
No, it looks okay.
Um, to to to, I, no, we're good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's a picture of the school, just.
Haven't seen that before.
Sorry, Kim, all the way up. Oh, we wanted to give her some props.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We greatly appreciate it. Um, hey, we are on 8B. Um, a budget transfer of 700. So the Planning Department to the Department of Public Works for copier leasing expenses. So here's motions.
John, you go.
This is John. So, um, just a quick explanation, I believe. Um, if I understood this correctly, Planning Board and the DPW, uh.
Department.
The, the, sorry, yes, the department, um, used to split a copier. And with the moving of one of the departments, um, the copier will now all be paid for out of one budget instead of half out of each. Yep, perfect. So, John, would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve a transfer of $2,700 from Planning 011752-5270 to Department of Public Works 014212-5270 for copier leasing expenses.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Okay, B5, uh, approved to close out completed capital projects. Is there a motion for 8B5?
I uh move to approve to close out completed capital projects for the total amount of $4,151.69. For the following, 3233 for uh soar from retained earnings for 6742. For, I'm sorry, 3420 for engine replacement chrome book from general fund for 8562. 3379 for IT computer equipment from general fund for $3,756.61. And 2414 IT projects from American Rescue Plan Act uh for $242.01. Second.
So these are completed projects and they had a little extra money and those are going back into those accounts. Having a motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Okay, moving on to 8B6 for Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Um, we have an acceptance of a grant not to exceed 45,000. Is there a motion?
For Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, I make a motion to approve the acceptance of a grant not to exceed $45,000 for costs associated with the East Long Meadow Town Center zoning bylaw project.
Second. Um, having a motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Um, this is something that Bailey's been going after. He received this grant, which is fantastic. Um, I believe he's reached out or will be reaching out to the Pioneer Valley Planning um to help.
I believe he needs you to accept this so he can, we can sign the contract, yeah.
Which is awesome.
Yeah.
And any grants coming in are well appreciated. Um, with no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed? Okay, um, next page, wow. We have approval of minutes.
We did.
Did we? I didn't check it off. Oh, Christ, you guys are great. Uh, old business. We have a discussion of a proposed backyard end zoning bylaw. Okay, so this was submitted to us from our building commissioner. Um, he would like to have the opportunity to go to the planning board and uh discuss the possibility of a um zoning amendment with regards to chickens. So, um. I would think that we send it to the planning board and see their opinion on it.
Absolutely.
And is there a motion to do such? And. It's not a first reading, right?
No, it's just.
This is just a, yes. So is there a motion?
I have one question first.
Yes.
Um, we tabled it at our last meeting, right?
Correct.
Could you remind me why?
You.
Matthew wanted a chance.
I wanted to take about it.
You need to discuss it with those chickens.
And so this is basically going to uh the Planning Board so that, um.
They can read.
They can review it and make a recommendation to us on how they think they should proceed. And I see David's here. David, do you want to say a couple of words on your uh backyard hens bylaw?
Sure. Well, not so much to it exactly, but just to let you know that at the last meeting, uh, last month. Um, I didn't hang up on you, Ralph. I, uh, I lost internet. Right at that crucial moment, so, um, that's what happened, but I did view the rest of the meeting, uh, from the recording. And, um, I appreciate that y'all were, you know, uh, uh, making some suggestions, uh, which I fully, you know, expected that. Uh, what I propose is is just that. It's just a proposal. Uh, it's not a, uh, something that fits every situation. I heard some things that I I thought were really appropriate, like, um, tailoring it to different sized lots, you know, how many of this or that and so on and so forth. Uh, I hope that that is the sort of thing that, um, the planning board takes up and that, uh, in the end, we come up with, uh, something that everybody feels good about. Uh, I think the important thing to me is that we have something codified that can be used, uh, to, you know, help, um, uh, answer complaints or help people, you know, along, uh, who called the department and say, you know, what, what do you have by way of, um, you know, backyard, uh, chickens or any kind of, you know, thing like that. That's the really important thing to me, so.
Great.
That's awesome. Thank you. So I would entertain a motion.
I move to refer the proposed backyard hen zoning bylaw to the planning board for recommendation to the town council.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And off to the planning board it goes.
Thanks for hanging on, Dave.
Thank you, David.
Certainly. Thank you.
Okay, discussion. O zoning bylaw amendment in relation to the home office first reading. And here we go. Okay, so I have them all printed, if anyone wants. But is Bailey in the audience?
Yes.
Would you bring him in?
No.
He's all been referred.
Yeah. I was at the public hearing.
Okay. Bailey, how are you tonight?
Hi, Bailey.
I'm doing good.
You're probably getting ready to go to sleep. I don't know. So if if the council doesn't mind, I just want to touch on all four of yours before we read them. Uh, we referred these to the planning board. Um, in your opinion, was there any major changes or anything? Um, I I was at, was I at the meeting?
I'm not sure, but I was.
I was at the meeting and it it seemed like they they were uh, very receptive and have recommended, uh, them to come back to us, correct?
That is correct, yeah. And there were a couple of small changes, nothing major, and, um, those are outlined in a different color. I believe I did green for those or something of that nature. So, um, it it should be pretty clear what the changes were from the planning board's recommendation.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. And we are going to get into reading.
Do you, uh, I'll do it.
You want to do the first one?
How long is it before?
So Kathy will, she will read the home office, uh, bylaw first reading. Maybe.
Well, we can start.
Sure.
Yeah.
So.
Under proposed amendments.
So that's his letter to us.
Okay, so.
Yep.
She started here with proposed amendments. I'm going to go with proposed amendment.
Yes.
Do you want me to start recommendation?
I think it's just, uh, yeah, the proposed amendment.
Oh, that's an okay.
Proposed amendments and justification. Article eleven definitions. Terms used in table three dash one for use G dash one home office, studio or cottage industry are not defined. The G one use is changed to home occupation or cottage food operation to avoid contradictory and inconsistent language. Therefore, definitions for home occupation and cottage food operation are included in section eleven point two, turp, excuse me, terms defined. Chapter four fifty, table three dash one, schedule of use regulations. Use G one home office, studio or cottage industry should be named renamed to home occupation or cottage food operation. For clarification, as home occupation is used in the standards and conditions and is a more general term and includes home office within the new definition. Under the standards and condition, the text, the use to provided that is unnecessary as the home occupation is now defined in the appropriate sections of the bylaws, section eleven point two. The removal of condition A, the requirement for site plan review waiver is necessary to remove contradiction of the exemption of residential properties from the requirement of site plan review. Although a home occupation is an accessory use on a residential property, the imposed standards and conditions of such use are adequately regulated through our business license process. Condition E is too restrictive to the residential use, so it should be removed. Condition F already covers exterior appearance related to the home occupation. The other small proposed changes to the language are made to remove incorrect references and confusing language.
Before we go on, this is actually the bylaw that's changed now. This is, this was explanation.
That was an explanation of what he was going to do. And we appreciate you reading the extra.
Yeah. Would you like me to continue?
Okay, so definitions, chapter four fifty, section, I'm sorry, section four fifty, eleven point two, terms defined. Home occupation, an occupation, trade or profession, including a not-for-profit organization, which results in a product or service for compensation, which is, one, customarily carried on in a dwelling unit, two, pursued by a person residing in the dwelling unit, and three, incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes. Such home occupations may include, but are not limited to the following. Office or studio of a building contractor, physician or surgeon, dentist, artist, lawyer, handicraft person, architect, professional engineer, realtor or real estate broker, insurance agent or broker, psychologist or counselor, notary public, teacher of scholastic subjects, accountant, hairdresser, beauty parlor operator or teacher of piano. The use must conform to the standards and conditions which are shown in table three dash one, schedule of use regulations, included as an attachment to this chapter. Cottage food operation. A home occupation use that includes the preparation of non-potentially hazardous, i.e. low risk food products such as cakes, cookies, breads and confectionaries in the home kitchen of that person's primary residence for off-premise sale to the consumer, including through the internet or mail order. Under accessory uses on the, uh, standards and conditions, um, the home occupation as defined in section four fifty dash eleven point two is permitted only when the following standards and conditions are met. A business license from the town of East Long Meadow shall be obtained. The home occupation shall be conducted in an office or studio in the primary dwelling and is carried on only by members of the resident family living on the premises. I lost my life. The home occupation is, I'm sorry, the home occupation shall be clearly incidental to and secondary to the use of the dwelling as a residence. D, the area devoted to the conduct of the home occupation shall not exceed twenty percent of the habitable floor area of the dwelling unit. And E, there is no exterior display, signage or visible storage or other outward evidence that the premises are being used for any purpose other than for a residential use. F, the use shall not constitute a nuisance by reason of an unaccepted level of air or water pollution, noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, glare, unsightliness, electrical interference or other activity which, when produced, is detectable to normal sensory perception beyond the property line in amounts exceeding those normal to a residential property. The use shall not constitute a safety hazard to a butters. G. And this is under cottage food operation. No articles are sold or offered for sale on the premises. A cottage food operation as defined in section four hundred and fifty dash eleven point two is allowed as a home occupation subject to all the conditions listed herein, provided the resident operator is issued and maintains a valid residential kitchen permit from the East Long Meadow Board of Health and complies with the requirements imposed by the Mass Department of Public Health regulations promulgated at one oh five C M R five nine zero.
The end. The end.
So I'm just going to point out under accessory uses, number one.
Where are you?
Under the table of use, it says home occupation or cottage food operation. And then when you go down to continue, it says home office, studio or cottage food operation. So I think when this goes to the planning matter subcommittee, that's just, uh, a point for them to take a look at.
What's your concern?
One, one list studio and it's a continuation. Another took out studio.
You know what he's talking about, Bailey? Are you there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, on the second page, um.
It's supposed to read the exact same because it's just a continuance.
Right.
I think it's just a typo.
Yeah.
So it should be home office, studio or cottage food operation.
It should be a home occupation or cottage food operation as it is on the first page of the use table.
Okay, all right. Okay, I see. All right.
Easy fix.
Okay. Having the first reading done. Any, any comments or would we like to go directly to a motion now?
I make a motion to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding home office to the planning matters committee for a recommendation to town council.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business, um, E three, which is our next, that's the parking plan.
So I, I'm all, I'm happy. I'll volunteer to read it.
And do you have it?
I have it.
It's fifty pages.
Geez, I just. And you would be starting under article.
Regulations. So this would be page, page three. Or I'm sorry.
Article three.
Article three.
And if you would like to do the reading, we would love to have you read the entire thing.
Article three use regulations, section four fifty dash three point three additional use dimensional intensity regulations. Commercial district two, slot coverage. In the case of a single-story building, the building area shall not exceed forty percent of the lot area and a minimum of twenty-four percent of the lot area shall be left as landscaped open space. In the case of a two-story building, the building area shall not exceed thirty percent of the lot area and a minimum of sixteen percent of the lot area shall be left as landscaped open space. Plot plans must be submitted to the planning department for approval of parking provisions in all cases into the Department of Public Works superintendent in accordance with the general bylaws, bylaw of the town of East Long Meadow, chapter four sixteen, vehicles and traffic, chapter four sixteen dash three and chapter four fifty of off-street parking. Chapter four fifty dash five point six where applicable. Uh, D, business districts, two, lot coverage. Building area shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the lot area. Plot plans must be submitted to the planning department for approval of parking provisions in all cases into the Department of Public Works superintendent in accordance with the general bylaw of the town of East Long Meadow, chapter four sixteen, vehicles and traffic, chapter four sixteen dash three and chapter four fifty of off-street parking, chapter four fifty dash five point six where applicable. Industrial district, two, lot coverage. Plot plans must be submitted to the planning department for approval of parking provisions in all cases into the Department of Public Works superintendent in accordance with the general bylaws of the town of East Long Meadow, chapter four sixteen, vehicles and traffic, chapter four sixteen dash three and chapter four fifty, off-street parking. Chapter four fifty dash five point six where applicable. Building area shall not exceed sixty percent of the lot area. Article four, special use regulations. By, excuse me. Um, chapter four fifty dash five point six, off-street parking. A, parking plan, one, uses requiring a parking plan. A parking plan shall be submitted at the time of any application for a building permit for the erection, alteration or enlargement of any building other than a single-family dwelling. No building permit for the erection, alter, alter, alteration or enlargement. Any building may be issued without approval of said parking plan. Cases of alteration or enlargement, these standards shall apply only to the altered or enlarged area. The parking plan shall be submitted to the planning department at the time of any application for the certificate of occupancy required in chapter four fifty dash seven point one of the zoning bylaw. No such certificate of occupancy may be issued without approval of said parking plan by the planning director. Parking plans shall show means of vehicular access area of circulation. The proposed property used and proposed building square footage shall be indicated on the plan. Any required landscaping shall be in indicated on the plan. Upon submission of a parking plan to the planning director, egress, access and drainage for the site must be approved by the town engineer. In granting a special permit for any use, the special permit granting authority may require off-street parking spaces, standards or conditions in addition to those set forth in this bylaw, if it deems necessary for the use. Six, the planning board may grant waivers to the parking requirements outlined in the section of the zoning bylaw. A request for waiver, Form M, must be submitted for any and all requirements. Parking specifications, B, one, in all districts, any and all parking spaces located on any lot shall be restricted to the use of the business allowed on the site by its employees, customers and other persons normally visiting the premises at any one time. There shall be no commuter parking, nor shall any business enter into any type of agreement for commuter and or satellite parking for businesses or activities not located on the site. All new structures and alterations or enlargements on existing structures shall be provided with off-street parking spaces in accordance with the following specifications. A, specifications for parking layout shall be in accordance with town of East Long Meadow parking standards. The standards shall include and are not limited to the following. One, all parking areas must meet the minimum parking dimension in diagram five dot six dash one, except the handicap parking requirements in subsection H. Shall supersede where appropriate. Two, each off-street parking space shall contain exclusive of approved access lanes not less than one hundred and eighty square feet when located in a parking lot and not less than one hundred and sixty square feet when located in a garage or other building. For planned business developments, retail outlets and other similar uses, there shall be a minimum of three hundred square feet of total paved area for each car parking space required. Three, parking spaces at a ninety-degree angle are encouraged. Extra width at the end of the parking stalls is desirable. Additional driveway width is necessary for main or through circulation aisles. See diagram five point six dash two for a dimensional illustration. Four, any required landscaping shall be indicated on the parking plan for approval. See diagram five dot six dash two for a dimensional illustration. Five, parking aisles must be adjusted as necessary to accommodate the size of the trucks serving the facility. See diagram five dot six dash two for a dimensional illustration. Six, parking stall markings, directional arrows, and other traffic signs shall be delineated by at least four-inch painted lines or by other suitable means and shall be permanently maintained. Seven, one driveway per parcel shall be permitted as matter of right. Two driveways for business, commercial, and industrial uses are generally desirable and shall be clearly marked as an entrance and as an exit. B, drainage. Drainage facilities for each parking area should be designed and constructed to contain stormwater runoff on the premises and stormwater should not be distributed on a public way. Amended four dash two dash twelve dash twenty-two. Surfacing, all of off-street parking facilities shall be surfaced in accordance with the Town of East Long Meadow Department of Public Works, D P W, standards and specifications. The access driveways and parking areas for all business, commercial, and industrial use shall be surfaced in, by. By two minute, thank you, or cement material according to established D P W standards and specifications amended four dash twelve dash twenty-two. I, review procedure, the planning director will either approve the parking plan based on the determination that the proposed parking plan meets all the requirements of chapter four fifty dash five point six. Two, deny the parking plan based on a determination that either insufficient information was submitted with the parking plan in order to adequately review the proposal, or the project does not meet the requirements of chapter four fifty dash five point six. Three, refer the parking plan to the planning board, subject to conditions, modifications, and reasonable restrictions necessary to ensure compliance with the requirements of chapter four fifty dash five point six. If the proposed parking plan includes an expansion of any parking lot by ten or more parking spaces or conversion of any use resulting in the addition ten or more required parking spaces, the planning board must review parking plan as part of the site plan review in conformance with article five, or article.
Nine.
Nine, excuse me, I. B, the concurring vote of a majority, three out of five, the membership of the planning board shall be required for a decision on a parking plan. The planning board shall render a decision within sixty days from the date the parking plan was referred to the planning board by the planning director and shall file its written decision with the Department of Public Works and the town clerk.
Thank you. Okay.
Now you get to make a motion. We're not done yet.
Done yet, but. So is there a motion?
I make a motion to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding parking plan review to the planning matters committee for recommendation to town council.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, moving on quickly. We have another first reading with regards to site plan review.
Do you have that one printed up?
I have this one printed.
I can start if you want.
Well, I was gonna say, I could, why don't we share it?
Sure, yeah.
If you don't mind.
Don't mind at all.
Article three use regulations, section four fifty dash three point zero applicability of use regulations. A, use designations, the restrictions and controls intended to regulate development in each district are set forth in table three dash one, East Long Meadow Schedule of Use Regulations. Following notation apply to the Schedule of Use Regulations. Why? Yes, to, does it, designates uses allowed by right in the district indicated. Site plan review is required for all uses as prescribed in article nine of the zoning bylaw. Note subdivisions are covered by the Town of East Long Meadow subdivision regulations. N, no, designates uses prohibited in the district indicated. S P, special permit, designates uses only allowed in the district with a special permit and site plan review as outlined in article eight, special permits. Fun. Alright, article nine, site plan review. Section four fifty dash nine point one purpose. The purpose of site plan review is to accomplish the purposes set forth in section one of the zoning bylaw. In considering a site plan, the planning board shall assure that all structures and uses other than a single-family dwelling developed in a manner which considers community needs, including protection of budding properties and visual amenities, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent areas, adequacy of methods of disposal for waste and surface water drainage, and protection of environmental features on the site and in adjacent areas. Section four fifty dash nine point two, design review. Design review committee. One, uh, design review committee shall be appointed by the planning board to serve for a period of three years with member rotation every three years after the initial two-year period and consist of five members with the following credentials if possible. A, planning director to serve as the committee chair. B, one person qualified by training and expertise, experience in architecture or landscape design. C, one person owning and or operating a business located in East Long Meadow governed by this bylaw. D, one at-large resident of the town, and E, one member of the Board of Directors of the East Long Meadow Chamber of Commerce. D, initiating design review. One, the planning director shall meet with the owner and or representative of the project to discuss the project, the design review process, and the items needed for design review prior to the submittal of an application. Depending on the complexity of the proposed project, it may be necessary to submit the following. A, colored photograph showing buildings and site conditions adjacent to the proposed project. B, building elevations at one eighth inch equals one foot scale showing configuration details and adjacent site building conditions. All elevations are to be titled and dated, eight copies are to be provided. C, samples of finished materials. D, study model of the proposed project, three-dimensional, three-dimensional for major projects only is requested by the design review committee. E, sightline study indicating concealment of rooftop mechanical equipment from the street. Applicable. F, site development plan and architectural drawings and specifying, one, the building footprint and dimensions, including all points of access and egress. Two, plans of interior spaces where applicable in order to determine dual formulas for parking requirements when affected by use. Three, architectural rendering specifying exterior elevation showing finished materials, windows, doors, light fixtures, stairways, balconies, decks, and architectural details. Elevation shall be provided for all affected exterior surfaces. Or exterior lighting on the proposed building, including the location, size. Five, method of illumination of all exterior signs. Six, location of areas to be landscaped. Seven, location of garbage disposal area and utility.
Appartnances.
Appartnances, thank you. There's a lot of new words tonight. Section four fifty dash nine point three, projects requiring site plan review. A, projects requiring site plan review.
Cause these were all across.
I know, mine wasn't in color, I was like, where are we? One, any change in use of the subject building or unit from its most recent use determined to cause an increase to the number of required parking spaces by ten or more parking spaces in accordance with section four fifty dash five point six. Two, the construction or exterior expansion of any structure or building, with the exception of single-family residential dwellings. Three, the expansion of any parking lot by ten or more parking spaces or the construction of, or exterior expansions, expansion of any educational institution or religious institution. Five, any other use specified in table three dash one, schedule of use regulations, indicates that site plan review is required unless the use is locating in an existing structure and no additions to the structure are to be undertaken and the planning director determines that no additional parking will be required to conform to the parking requirements outlined in article five of the zoning bylaw, section four fifty dash five point six. Six, where a use is allowed with only site plan review and no special permit is required, the use shall be approved if it satisfies the criteria in this article nine. Seven, any use that requires a special permit as specified in the use regulation schedule, in which case a single review and approval is that shall be as provided in section four fifty dash eight point two A. B, no special permit or building permit shall be applied for or issued for any of the above uses unless the site plan has been endorsed by the planning board after consultation with the other boards, including but not limited to the following. Building Commissioner, Town Board of Health, Town Engineer, Conservation Commission, D P W Superintendent, Fire Department, and Police Department. C, site plan review for any use exempt from zoning under M G L chapter forty A is for the purpose of ensuring compliance with reasonable regulations as related to parking, open spaces, building height, and building setbacks requirements as provided for in M G L chapter forty A. E, waiver permitted. The planning board may grant a full waiver for all requirements of a site plan review approval for the following. One, new construction under one thousand square feet, and two, exterior expansions, provided that the expansion is less than twenty-five percent of the existing floor area of the structure. Where the structure is a part of a complex consisting of multiple buildings functioning as a single facility, the sum of the total square footage of all structures comprising the complex may be used to determine the threshold for such a waiver. E, finding required. Prior to granting any waiver of the site plan review approval, the planning board must make a finding that the board determines that the proposed development with the requested waivers will have a de minimis impact relative to the criteria set forth in section four fifty dash nine point seven and four fifty dash nine point eight. Section four fifty dash nine point four, content of site plan. B, the planning board shall have the right to waive any of the above items under unique site conditions or request an additional data, any additional data it should need to render its decision. A request for waiver form W must be submitted for each requested requirement waiver. Unless an applicant is requesting the full site plan review be waived, the site plan review form site must be submitted indicating such request. A majority vote of the planning board would be required to waive any of the site plan requirements. Section four fifty dash nine point five, review procedure. A, each application for the site plan review shall be submitted to the Planning and Community Development Department on form site accompanied by two hard copies of the site plan and complete an application and one electronic P D F version of the same. A copy of the complete application form site shall be concurrently filed, filed with the town clerk by the applicant. B, the planning to director shall upon receipt of complete application and no later than two business days of the established submittal deadline transmit electronic copy of the complete application material and site plan to the Building Commissioner, Director of Public Health, Conservation Commission, Public Works Superintendent, Town Engineer, Water and Sewer Administrator, Fire Department, and Police Department. These departments shall have fourteen calendar days to provide comment to the planning board prior to the meeting. C, all applications for site plan review must include payment of the application fee specified in section five hundred dash ten, schedule of town fees. The cost of advertising the public hearing is to be paid by the applicant. D, the planning board may hire at the expense of the applicant independent consultants to review the plans and application materials submitted, or require new application materials completed by independent consultants be submitted if it determines expert review is appropriate for the interest of the neighborhood and or community. In such event, the planning director shall, one, select an expert independent consultant to perform the review and determine a scope of services agreeable to the planning board and the applicant. Two, require the applicant pay the estimated cost of said expert to the town collector treasurer prior to any review being undertaken. No site plan shall be approved until the total cost of said review has been paid by the applicant. Any excess of deposit shall be returned to the applicant upon completion of the review. E, expiration. A site plan approval granted under this section shall last after a period of one year has passed if substantial use has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause. This period shall not include such time required to pursue or wait the determination of an appeal referred to in M G L chapter forty A, section seventeen. Under table, we have types of districts. I don't really understand this table.
Under, uh, created uses, um, we have a Y, which is yes. And it's a, a use allowed by right, site plan review required for all uses as prescribed in article nine. N is use prohibited. Those are changes, S P is use allowed by special permit from the planning board. Thank you for the reading. I'm sure. We're getting there. Okay, so we've done the reading. Anyone have any comments other than, um, a suggestion, Anna, or a motion?
I make a motion to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendment site plan review to the planning matters committee for recommendation to the town council.
Second.
What a motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. We're moving on. Now we have another proposed zoning bylaw amendment in relation to recreation facilities, first reading. Hey, what, how about if I read this one?
Fair enough.
Is that good? Article eleven definitions, uh, subsection four fifty dash eleven point two, terms defined. Uh, area and or facility for sporting facility, an area that is designed to offer athletic-type events to be viewed by a significant number of spectators with said with said spectators either seated or standing, including but not limited to a professional commercial sports stadium and or arena. A professional commercial ice rink, ice hockey rink and or ballpark or a hippodrome. Town sports are adjusted under school, park, and recreation regulations, not applied to this section. Recreation, an activity that people engage in during their free time that people enjoy and that people recognize as having socially redeeming values. Recreation facility, a place designed and equipped for the conduct of sports, leisure time activities, and or customary and usual recreational activities. Recreation facility, private. A recreation facility operated by a non, nonprofit organization and open only to bona fide members and guests of such nonprofit organization. Recreation facility, commercial. A recreation facility operated as a business and open to the public for a fee. And then under, uh, our schedule, it's this three, three point one, I believe it is, um, land use classification, general uses. A, nine, uh, recreation facility, uh, commercial and private. Uh, under standards and conditions, it says see article eight. And then the changes are under commercial, actually, let me go through the whole. A A, residential zone, A A is not allowed. A is a no, B is a no, C is a no. E R is a no, commercial is a yes, business is a yes. Industrial is by special permit. Industrial garden park is by special for permit. Uh, golf recreation is special permit. P U R is no, E A R is no, and M U V.
Special.
Special permit. Any questions? Yes, I took the easy one. Okay, do we have a motion for E five?
I make a motion to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding recreation facilities to the planning matters committee for a recommendation to the town council.
A second. Having a motion made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? None opposed. Perfect. That's done. New business, action.
Before you move on.
Yes.
Um, in terms of the planning matter subcommittee, uh, my expectation is that this, the second reading will be next month or weeks from. You're not gonna have a meeting in two weeks or anything like that.
Not that I'm expecting.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, well, we can't have one in two weeks for a second reading because.
There's not enough time.
It will have to be a public hearing.
Published and all that, okay, but I'll have it. I have to talk to Matt to find out when he's available.
Figure it out. Oh, you get to read them all again, huh? Okay, action items for next meeting. Is there any action items anyone wants me to address? Um, our next meeting.
Thanks Bailey.
This Friday.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you Bailey. No action items, beautiful. So, um, executive session. I make a motion to move into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, taking, lease, or value of real property at three eighty-two North Main Street and then to return to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
And this is a roll call. And this is a roll call vote. Uh, Anna.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
We are headed into executive session, Dan.